Good morning, everybody. It is 10:00 AM. It is April 13th. This is the Washoe County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Welcome to everybody that's here with us this morning. I will call the meeting to order and we will, I will have Commissioner John, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Thank you for the honor, Mr. Chairman. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman. County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney David Watzvall.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate it. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item three, sir.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comments limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
Yes, we have several people signed in, so if you would cue yourself while the person before you is speaking. We have Ms. Christie McMahon first, followed by Ms. Cindy Sassenrath.
Good morning, Ms. McMahon.
Good morning. I've never done this before, so I hope I'm doing it right. I would like the Washoe County to be open at 100% with no restrictions. And my other comment was, we were approved by Bob Lucy to help clean up the voting rolls and nobody contacted us. So we were wondering what we're supposed to do, to just show up or how do we get this done? Nobody has started the process and it doesn't seem fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, Ms. Cindy Ressentas, followed by Lori Agnew.
Welcome.
Good morning. In March of 2020, we decided to pause our economy. It was a good way to assess what the virus was. Well, it's a year later and now we know. We know who's at risk. We have a vaccine available for those who feel threatened by it. Yet the goalposts for reopening our country seem to be going crazy. They keep moving. We should be allowing people to show responsibility for themselves. If you're concerned, stay home, but don't make me stay home. Don't take away my liberty to do what I want to do. Don't make me wear a mask to exercise. It really inhibits my breathing. Don't make me wear a mask to enter a building because that hasn't shown to be a real problem. We need to open our county at 100% and lead the nation, lead Nevada, and open our county and show that we can get our economy going and not keep moving our goalposts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Lori Agnew, followed by Ms. Bev Stenham.
Welcome, Ms. Agnew.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to address the commission today. I'm asking to open the county 100%. This lockdown is no longer necessary. The initial goal was to keep our hospitals from being overrun. That's been accomplished. It was never about eliminating COVID. The quarantine and restrictions should be voluntary at this point. Those with health concerns, they can quarantine themselves, they can restrict their own activities, but do not quarantine the healthy. We are a nation of free people, please remember that. I also want to address the voting. Please clean up our voting records. The Republican women of Reno and others have volunteered to assist with this task. This is the only way to protect our vote and our democracy. We want you to get rid of the deceased voting records, those who have moved, bad addresses, et cetera, et cetera. Please restore integrity to our voting process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, and I'm sorry if I massacre your name, Ms. Bev Stenham, followed by Ms. Lynn Gillespie.
Welcome, Ms. Stenham.
Hi, I'm Bev Stenham. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. Two things. One is, I would like us to clean up our voter rolls, take off the dead people, the people that have voted twice, vacant lots, non-citizens, the list goes on. If we could please return voting integrity. As you know, many of us feel that the election was invalid, that the elections were stolen for various reasons. And whether it's true or not, we do believe it's true, but the perception is there. And if you want to have people come out to vote, we have to reassure them that their vote is being counted and counted correctly. The other issue is, gosh, I'm nervous, sorry.
Open the county.
Open the county, thank you. Open the county. I am nervous, I apologize. And lift all restrictions. Like the other speaker said, it's been over a year. We were supposed to just flatten the curve for two weeks and here we are, over a year later. And it was never about getting rid of COVID. It was about just keeping the hospitals from being overwhelmed. These masks, from what I understand, are pretty much worthless. The virus molecules are so tiny, they easily penetrate these masks that you guys are wearing. And I've read a lot of studies about this. Even the surgeons say that the only reason they wear a mask during surgery is to keep their own spittle off the open wound, that no surgeon in his right mind or her right mind would ever go into surgery knowing that they're sick and thinking that their mask is going to keep that person from being infected. So these masks are pretty much worthless. They just show blind obedience to the government. And they're just, they're not doing anything, doing any good. They're doing a lot more harm than good. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Ms. Lynn Gillespie, followed by Ms. Judy Hare.
I'm Lynn Gillespie. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This morning, when I woke up, I looked out my window and I saw beautiful spacious skies and beautiful purple mountains. And it made me realize how lucky I am to live in this state and to live in this country and to have freedom to stand up and speak to all of you. And I thought about the young men in Nevada that are in armed services and the veterans that we have that live here, that are fighting for our freedom and that are casting their votes, and about how those votes are counted, if they are counted, and if they matter. And I think that's kind of a sad thing that I have to think about after looking at all this beauty of Nevada surrounding me. And the other thing I think about almost every day, my mother passed away in October. I know that she was registered to vote, she was a patriot. And I wonder where her ballot went and who voted for her and how they filled it out, if they filled it out the way that she would have wanted to have voted. And then I just think about all those who have passed, who have ballots that are sent out and possibly filled out and counted. And are we allowing those people, those patriots, the dignity of having their vote cast the way they would have cast it if they were living? And we're just asking that the voting counting and the procedures and the whole mess here in Nevada gets cleaned up. The Republican women are willing to volunteer their time and to help. I've heard that the reason we're not allowed to volunteer to help with this is because we have to be civil, pass a civil servants test or be civil servants. And I'm sure everybody in the Republican women could pass that test. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Ms. Judy Hare, followed by Ms. Susan Howell.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Stenham.
Thanks so much. My first time speaking like this since high school. But I want to digress just a little bit, if I may. The other day, I was watching television and I saw a commercial, a spot for the disabled veterans. And I believe it was called Tunnels to Towers. And there were four or five young, beautiful men that were sitting, being interviewed, that had no legs, some had no arms. They were sitting wrapped in leather and iron prostheses. And I look at these boys and girls and I think, they went voluntarily to fight and protect us, fight for us. And they come back just a shambles. And they have a whole life ahead of them, not unlike these soldiers before them that shed blood for this country, for our America, and to keep our ways, keep our liberties, keep our ways of voting, keep us safe, keep us safe, the police keep us safe, all these things. And I look at them and I think, what are they thinking? They come back from the war and they see what America has become. And it's not from over there, the hellish place on earth, Afghanistan, Yemen, it's from right here. It's the lawmakers that are changing our laws and taking away our rights. And we are not going to really stand for it. We're law-abiding citizens. We are American citizens. We follow the law to the T. But we are a voice, we're a collective voice, and we are going to stand up. And just to let you know, there's more of us. We're growing. We're going through the cities and the counties and the states because we're opening our eyes to what is happening to our blessed, beautiful country. And as a collective voice, we're not going to stand for it. So we would love to meet with you, whatever the protocol is, and work together unitedly to try and maintain and sustain this country that we love so much. So I thank you for the time. And in closing, I just want to say, God bless all of you and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Susan Howell, followed by Ms. Carol Feinberg.
Good morning. I'm going to start with a very powerful thing that I had given to me. And I want you all to listen with your hearts as well as your heads because from what I've seen coming here, week after week is, you're on your own agenda. You don't really care what we have to say. But bear with me. When children are masked, forced to breathe their own exhalations, incapable of seeing smiles of their friends and loved ones, separated by plastic shields and commanded to remain a random six feet apart, because no one knows where that came from, from each other, they are not in school, they are in hell.
Yep.
Do you hear that? Hell. You have just voted for 75% of this community to have to take the, it's not a vaccine, it does not qualify a vaccine, the jab that is so nefarious that I hope when fall comes and the flu hits and people start dropping like flies, but you folks are saying, oh, no, it's another wave of the virus. I hope you all have to face crimes against humanity. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Carol Feinberg, followed by Ms. Sue Walton.
Good job, good job. Go get 'em, girl.
I'm going to take this off, but look at all the air that can come up here. This is supposed to be a safe mask. It doesn't do any more than nothing. All right. I understand my verbiage is garbled when I have that on because it's kind of going through a wall. Three weeks ago, 21 days ago, we were here. I stood before you and I said, I represent 200 women who would be happy to volunteer their time to help the registrar voters clean up the voter rolls. Now, we know that we can't clean up the voter rolls because that's part of a civil service job. We're not civil servants, we understand that. But I offered to have us answer the phones or file so that they could have their staff do what is necessary to clean up the voter rolls. I am listed in the phone book. I have made personal contact with Deanna Spicula and Heather Carmen, they both know how to find me. I don't understand why I have not heard from anybody. Three weeks, we could have gotten several thousand voter rolls cleaned up by then. Just wondering what's happening on that. And yes, I echo everyone else's sentiments about opening our county completely without restrictions, without masks. They don't do any good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Sue Walton, followed by Mr. Charles Elliott.
Welcome, Ms. Walton.
Thank you. Well, I had a whole little thing that I wanted to talk about, but I think what I really want to ask is, I was at a meeting with the registrar and she discussed the fact that we have illegals coming to our county. They are able to get a driver's license when there is no differentiating between a driver's license from a person who is illegal coming into our country or a person like myself who provides my passport, my birth certificate, and goes to the DMV to get that special driver's license. On the driver's license itself, it obviously shows that I've provided that information. But the driver's license number, there's no difference between someone who got a driver's license who's an illegal and someone like myself who provided the identification necessary to show that I am a citizen of this country. I would like to know how that is going to be addressed and resolved. We're asking the registrar to clean up the voter rolls, but this is a hindrance. So I'm looking forward to the presentation and I, there's no reason why that should not be addressed. We cannot allow a loophole to, to have eligible voters need to be confident that future elections are going to be fair and honest, that all citizens, all of us, have the responsibility, the privilege to exercise our right to vote. We also need to know that our single vote will not be diluted by individuals illegally or willfully circumventing our voting process of United States citizens and Washoe County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, Mr. Charles Elliott, followed by Ms. Nicole Harris.
Mr. Elliott. These masks tear up my throat. Wow. This is beautiful, beautiful building. I'm, I've never been here before, okay? I've lived here for 74 years, raised three beautiful children, and they're happily married, seven grandchildren, and I'm ashamed of where I lived. At one point, I was one proud American, Nevadan. It was, and it has degenerated because of our city leaders, county, state, and national. But we, the people, are waking up. And it's not going to happen. We're going to fight like true Americans. Commissioner Jung, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Watzvall, and Galassini. We're not going to be quiet. We're getting together. I've never done this before. I'm ashamed that I haven't gotten involved more. But I believe the stupid lie that you elect the right people and they'll do the right things. Man, was I flipping wrong. Okay, I got that out of the way. What's going on with our voting rolls? Clark and Washoe Counties control the whole state, but the rural counties don't have anything to, they don't even equate to us. And it's a shame that we have been overtaking by lies and deceit. We need to clean up the voter rolls and let's vote. Come on, guys. Even over in Iran, I think it is, or, yeah, Iran, you get a purple dot when you vote. Here, we can't even, we don't even know who voted and who didn't. It's a shame, guys. We've got to get that fixed. Also, Governor Sisalak's, I've got to hurry up here. Governor Sisalak closed this down and he totally banned hydroxychlorine, which is a very cheap drug that's been proven for over 50 years. We could have had all of our people that died, most of them, had been taken care of. Initially, we'd be okay. We are, we are following a lie. I wear, I have to wear this mask, I've got asthma, I can't even breathe this stupid thing on. It doesn't work. We've got to get rid of it.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ms. Nicole Harris, followed by Mr. Arvid Pasto.
Welcome, Ms. Harris.
Good morning, Nicole Harris, Reno resident. I want to share a personal story of how my parents came to this country. I was born in New York City. My parents came over here from China. My father was the ninth child. They were very blessed because they had nine sons. His parents died when he was nine years old and he was considered to be an orphan. And in Chinese culture, being an orphan, orphan is very undesirable and you're cast aside. Luckily, my father was a very good student. He was very tall, he played basketball, he was a center. And by the luck of the draw, I would not be standing here today. What happened is, his oldest brother had a son who was eligible to come to the United States for education. However, the education system in China at that time is, if you do not pass the class, you do not graduate. And as a result, he was not able to come. So there was a slot left. And luckily, my dad applied for it and he was selected. At that time, they had to buy American dollars on the black market to come here. When he came here, he did not understand English very well. And eventually, because of the communists coming over, he was declared a man without a country. And Congress graciously passed legislation which granted him $50 a month. So he came to be an engineer and he decided he wanted to go back to China to build structural engineering buildings and everything. He never went back. He died here and unfortunately, he had another family in China. I never knew I had siblings or step siblings or half siblings, whatever, older than I am. And so for him to be naturalized, he was very proud of being an American, to uphold the law. And if I looked at these two scriptures, I want to say, or mission statements, and I look at it, and I talked about it last time, it's not a question that we have voter rolls or we want to have the county, it should be open or, the question is, how do we engage the citizens? Because we are the people and one is better as a team. And I'm asking you, I'm imploring you, to come up with some strategic ways in which we can all work together, okay? So please, we are here, we'll have more people coming, and we are mobilizing, and we do have brigades in the work. So we want to work with you and if voting can be manipulated, regardless of what it is, whether you're Republican, Democrat, or Independent, if it's happened to someone else, just remember, the seesaw always has to go the other way. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Arvid Pasto, followed by Ms. Elaine Pasto.
Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. Pasto.
It's my first time here. I appreciate the opportunity to do so. I'm a citizen of Nevada, of Washoe County. I've also lived in Massachusetts, New York, and Tennessee. I want to talk about voting integrity. I believe that if we don't have a voting system that we can all trust, then democracy is effectively lost. Given the opportunity, some will cheat as far as they can go, putting in fake or incorrect ballots. This needs to be fixed. When we lived in Tennessee, voting was held in local school buildings. When you walked in, there was a person sitting there with this giant book. They would look your name up, it has your name and your address. Once you were found, you could vote after you showed a verifiable ID. If you were not in that book, you did not vote, so simple as that. Today, of course, you wouldn't need the books because we have computers, you can have all that information right in front of the people working the polls, but you get my point. Each voter must be identified with the correct form of ID. I implore you to fix the many problems that have already been identified by previous speakers. Clearing the rolls of dead, moved, or non-voters would be a quick and easy start. Why are you not doing that? We deserve an explanation. I have the expectation of an open and transparent government where they keep us informed of their actions or their non-actions. I look forward to some sort of communication from you, between you and the voters of Washoe County. Maybe an article published in the local newspaper might suffice, even though everyone couldn't get to see it there. Maybe you would put it on Facebook or Twitter or YouTube to get the information to everyone else. We need an explanation as to why you are not doing something as simple as cleaning up the rolls. On another subject, you as the county commission can open the county completely without waiting for the governor to free us from his ridiculous mandate. Why are you not doing that?
Any explanation? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you one more time. Please, no speaking while other people are speaking. Thank you, sir. Continue.
Okay, that's it. I just wanted to know if we're ever going to get an explanation from you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ms. Elaine Pasto, followed by Ms. Ann Sweeter.
Welcome, Ms. Pasto.
Thank you. I am a citizen of Nevada, and I used to call myself a proud citizen of Nevada. That was before the serious problems that we have with our voter system occurred, by midnight meetings, changing how the, how the votes were distributed, votes in mail to everyone. And I'm just a little ashamed of the way our election system came out the last time. I feel like there isn't trust, and we won't have trust until we know that our voting system is clean. And by clean, I mean voter rolls cleaned up. People who didn't vote in the last four elections are probably not going to vote again. People who list vacant address, vacant lots and buildings, office buildings, that's an illegal way to list your voting. Voters whose signatures are questionable because of poorly interfacing technology between the DMV and the signing machines in the county. Voters over 110 years old, all of those people don't have to be on the voter's rolls anymore. They're free to re-enroll if they are capable and able to vote. But, you know, we have offered to provide you folks with help. There's 200 women that are, can be drawn on, and I learned that, you know, we can't do the job of civil servants. Think of that word, civil servant. You are a civil servant. We are the civilians. We are the population. We're asking you to do the job that we elected you to do. And, and like everyone else, we're asking you why. Now, I know it might make it a lot easier to cheat and maybe there are people who want that, I don't know. But I would think as an American citizen, no matter what your politics are, you would not want to see votes diluted. Because as she said before, what goes around comes around. And I think that you're setting a dangerous precedent when you're going with someone like this governor who would, who would actually call a meeting, have no other representation except the Democrats, and then send out all of these things. And I know of people who have gotten more than one, I know of people who, you know, empty homes, people have died. Where do those go? They end up somewhere because they don't all go back to the post office. And another subject, if... And, another subject, if, you know, you as a county commission can completely open up this county, you can do that without the governor's blessing. The governor is not a physician. He's just touting that line. And we would like to live free and independent lives. One of the things I put up here that I kind of skipped, my brother, I talked to him, he's in Florida, and he said, "Why don't you leave that communist state? Come live in Florida." And I said, "No, this can be fixed."
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Ms. Ann Sweeter, followed by Ms. Diane Craig.
Welcome, Ms. Sweeter.
It's been a year of living with COVID. All the many safeguards have been driven into everyone's head. We all know what to do and are capable of taking care of ourselves and do not need government-controlling regulations. If keeping the county in restrictions is so necessary, then why are the southern borders of the United States open and allowing unvaccinated illegals in? A lot of them have COVID. If keeping the country and, keeping the county in restrictions is so necessary, then, then why do our state legislators want Nevada be a sanctuary state and allow those incoming illegals unchecked? If keeping the county in restrictions is so necessary, then why is the federal government not restricting the illegals in the United States? If keeping the county in restrictions is so necessary, then why is the federal government shipping the illegals to different states even if they have COVID? It all seems this is all about control. This needs to stop and the county needs to open without restrictions for access to all businesses. We, the people, can handle it and our freedoms are worth more than any tax money could amount to. Open the county with no restrictions. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Diane Craig, followed by Mr. Carl Sweeter.
Welcome, Ms. Craig.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm Diane Craig. So basically, she said pretty much everything that I think and feel. I don't understand the need for these masks. I just don't. There's so much inconsistency if you go out in public, if you go to restaurants, if you go to stores. Who wipes down what? It was brought to my attention that Target wipes down the every, the self-checkout after every guest, but they don't change their rag after every guest. That doesn't sound very effective to me. I don't know about you. Our children, what is, what is this doing to our children? Have you thought about that, the long-term effects? Oh my God. If COVID ever goes away, we've raised children who are going to be scared of another child sneezing and running to their mommy and thinking, "Oh my God, I've got a disease, I'm going to die. What's going to happen?" We're raising a society of fear. And, and, I mean, I just, I just don't understand. And it's my understanding that Governor Sisalak ra, has now allowed that hydroxychlorine can be, can be used as a treatment for COVID. We all know that it works. We all have the vaccines. Why are we still in lockdown? We have, we've got, we've got cures, we've got things in place. Why? Why are we still locked down? What, what, I don't understand. I don't understand. Why are we still wearing masks? Like another speaker said, they don't do anything. The microns are so small, they get through. Physicians, surgeons only wear them, which is correct, to prevent spit from getting into an open wound. Why are we wearing them? Is this the life you all want? As commissioners, do you all want this for yourselves, for your family, for your children? I think it was you, Ms. Hill, who said at the last meeting, "You don't believe in forced vaccines, my rights, my bodies." But yet, you, four to one, you voted, voted that we have to have a certain number of vaccinations of our citizens to reopen. That doesn't sound like my right, my body. That sounds like the government telling me what I need to do. And so where does it come in when stores and, and public places say, "We can't go in unless we're vaccinated"? Well, that sounds like another form of discrimination. Right? Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Mr. Carl Sweeter, followed by Ms. Julianne Harrison.
Welcome, Mr. Sweeter.
Good morning. In your role of county commissioners, elected by the citizens of Washoe County, you have a responsibility to these citizens. You've been asked repeatedly by these citizens to drop the governor's unlawful, unreasonable, and unconstitutional mandates and reopen our county and restore our rights. It's been reported that you are in favor of doing just that. What's stopping you? Is it fear of retaliation by the governor? Bring it on. He can't do any worse to us than has already been done. Our freedoms are worth more than any threatened financial retaliation. Nearly half the counties in our state have already opened in defiance of the governor's unlawful and unconstitutional dictatorial edict. Join the other counties and return our constitutional freedoms to us. Tell the governor and his so-called COVID tax force what he can do with Directive 041. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Julianne Harrison, followed by Ms. Cindy Martinez.
As a resident, as a resident of Washoe County for over 65 years, it grieves me to witness my home and the home of my four adult kids and their, and my eight grandchildren falling victim to the governor's autocratic use of power, as demonstrated with the relentless COVID-19 mask mandates. Just over a year ago, Nevadans willingly wore masks and social, social distance for what was to be a two-week period to flatten the curve. Why? Because we trusted that our local government had our best interests at heart. Well, here we are, 13 months later, and you, our elected representatives, have proven once again that serving the people you swore to serve is apparently not at all what you proposed to do. Our pleas to open up Washoe County has not fallen on deaf ears, because I know you hear us loud and clear. But they have fallen on the ears of people who are either unwilling or unable to relate to the citizens such as myself and my fellow Nevadans. Through these illogical mandates, the thousands of kids in the Washoe County School District have been subjected to subpar hybrid teaching, and sports has been pelted with confusion, not only with the school district, but with city leagues as well. One field might require masks outside the fenced area, while another sport field may not. And why should we need them outside anyway? Going out for a meal is laughable. While patronizing a local restaurant, we were, of course, required to wear a mask until we were seated, only to have our order taken by the waiter two feet away while we were maskless. Now, if we're being totally honest with each other, this makes absolutely no sense. My stand here today is not just for my freedoms or for my fellow Nevadans behind me, but your, for your freedoms as well. You may feel comfortable sitting where you are on this board, in this chamber, or perhaps you even feel untouchable. But someday, you might find yourself on the other side of a podium in a chamber such as this one, asking your elected representatives to give a listen and to truly take heart, weigh the facts, abide by the Constitution, and ask that there not be overreach of government for an issue you feel very strongly about. Unless a person is living under a rock, you'd have to have at least read, listened to, or heard of the dozens of highly credentialed doctors from around Nevada and the United States, who with facts and statistics have stated the numerous ill effects of wet mask wearing, and that there is absolutely no reason whatsoever to keep our communities under mandates that limit a business of any nature or any school from performing as they were intended, which is to open up and operate to their fullest extent. In short, let's stop the confusion, let's stop the nonsense, and let's open up Washoe County. And finally, do not insult Nevada citizens by throwing us mitigation crumbs or by baiting us with vaccine coercion.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Next up, Ms. Cindy Martinez, followed by Mr. David Fossum.
Good morning, commissioners, Mr. Manager, and Mr. Assistant District Attorney. Nevada grassroots has been working extraordinarily hard contacting citizens at curbside, and Melanie will be submitting additional signatures that we've garnered from our fellow citizens. I can tell you, in our effort to engage our fellow citizens in support of reopening Nevada, or rather Washoe County, is that we've endured, we've been flipped, we've been told that we're number one with their social finger. We've had masks waved at us, we've had senior citizens demand that we get vaccinated. But more encouragingly, by ones and twos, we've lured people from the straight-ahead drive on Kitzke and encouraged them to come and join us in signing for freedom. And as we engaged in the curbside and sent them down to Melanie, Melanie then set about educating them about their constitutional rights, what the meaning of Directive 041 means. And so by ones and twos, we're gathering together, and one lady in the car yesterday commented, she goes, "God bless you. Thank you. I thought I was the only one." And that's how many of us feel out here in the county. So, I went back, I didn't have a chance to attend your meeting in full last week, I had another engagement, but I watched it, and I watched it again in full last night. And I had a light go off. And I'd like to pose this question, not only to those of you on the dais, but those in here, who grew up during the Cold War? Raise your hand if you grew up during the Cold War. Do you remember the atomic drills? This is something that I think Commissioner Hill does not have direct life experience with, as does Chair Lucy and Commissioner Young. And even listening to Commissioner Hill, I cruelly called you a comrade, and I apologize for that. And I listened to you as well, Commissioner Young, and I recognize that you're from two generations of Democrat ideology. And we've got three generations here on the dais. And I think that that's important to understand, what motivates all of us, those of us who are baby boomers, and understand the impending threat of totalitarianism and communism, understand that what we're fighting here is not just about the mass social distancing, sitting six feet apart, six to a table, 10 to a table, but it's about the underlying control proposed by the changing balance of power in our country. And that's what we are passionate about. That's what we're frightened about. And we're getting dangerously close to shirts and skins, if you know what I mean. And that's why we are working so hard at trying to bring people together and encourage people to understand what the foundational principles of our country are. And we ask that you consider that when you look at what you're voting on tomorrow. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Donald Fossum, followed by Ms. Jeanne Quintana.
I want to thank you, commissioners, for paying attention, most of you. This is not my first time in front of you. I was here in 2018 and did a good enough job by invitation of one of your members to object to the potential of voter fraud, two voting cycles ago. And apparently, I did well enough for the registrar of voters' assistant to come out of her chair, seek me out, take me to her boss, which led to Cola interviewing her boss and I. Unfortunately, they didn't think it was worth running more than one time in their first news cycle and didn't run it in any more of their news cycle. And when I contacted that news person that I was in the interview with, she said, "That tape is gone." Tape, I dated myself, however the hell you do it these days. Anyway, so voter fraud, huge. You guys were, you, ladies and gentlemen, have been on to it for a while now. You probably had some implications of it before I warned you. I held up numerous letters here from, that had gone to my address by people that don't live there. And I don't know if they are, to this day, been cleaned off the voter record. I'm going to go check tomorrow, and I will be back on that. Thank you. But you know what? Voter fraud isn't going to mean a thing if we don't get this state and county of Nevada open. This here mask is from the first demonstration we went to in Carson City, reopen Nevada, Phase Zero. Voter registration and voter character is not going to mean a damn thing if this state remains closed. Because that is part of the leverage to get the damn election to go the way maybe you want it to, instead of the way we want it to. I turn my time over to whoever.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ms. Jeanne Quintana, followed by Ms. Tracy Thomas.
I just wanted to say that we need to open this county, and like a lot of people said, mainly for our children. It's bad enough what's happening to adults, but I, I think you probably all know that. I want to say, we have rights. I'm going to read you an excerpt from the Nuremberg Code. Do you want to be associated with this? This is already happening in Europe. There's a lawyer calling for this. The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, cover, coercing, or other ulterior form of consistent or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements of the subject matter involved, and be, and enable him to make an understanding and enlightened decision. This latter element requires that before the acceptance of an affirmative decision by the experimental subject, there should be made known to him the nature, duration, and purpose of the experiment. This method and means by which it is to be conducted, all inconveniences and hazards reasonably, reasonably to be expected, and the effects upon his health or person which may possibly come from his participation in this experiment. This whole thing is kind of a joke. As Rand Paul said, the mask, this is like theater. As many people have stated, the mask does not protect us, and it's not protecting other people. People get vaccinated and they still get the virus. So please, use some critical thinking. Think about what you're really doing, what you're doing to society, and we all have rights. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Ms. Tracy Thomas, followed by Ms. Rita Pepe.
I'm kind of a nuts-and-bolts type of gal. I like to do my homework, so I've read the presentation on item five in your agenda today. And when you're listening to this, this morning's presentation regarding the maintenance of your voter lists, please keep the following in mind. What is being done to ensure only eligible citizens are being registered? It was confirmed Nevada had over 4,000 instances of non-citizen voters in 2020. Number two, what is being done with the registrations of persons who have already voted in California? It has been confirmed Nevada had over 19,000 instances of this in 2020. Why isn't the county's own vital statistics database being used to validate dead voters rather than obituary sections of newspapers? My husband's father's obituary wasn't published in the newspaper until a year after his death. His mother never had an obituary. I also witnessed the death of an out-of-town visitor never being published. Are death records checked in other states on the chance our voters died in other states? Is a voter, if a voter is no longer living at an address in a certain precinct, how can they be legally eligible to vote in that precinct? For instance, if I live in Sparks, how am I legally allowed to vote in Reno if that is the last address the registrar has on file for me? Can the election officer who provides me a ballot outside of the precinct I currently live in be held liable for violation of NRS 293B dot 295? As an election officer for over 20 years, this is kind of concerning to me. Why are voter lists going to be updated every two months on non- Why are voter lists going to be updated every two months on non-election years, but then only twice in election years? This seems kind of backwards, and should be increased maybe to weekly in election years, considering the critical scrutiny these roles will be held to in future elections. There is no mention of new voter registration applications being checked against the ERIC system. This may be just an oversight, but it is worth confirming, especially for same-day registrations. How is Washoe County accommodating challenges to same-day registrations as provided in NRS 293.287, 303, and 535? So just some fuel for that, because inquiry minds want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, Ms. Rita Pepe, followed by Mr. James Bentham.
Welcome, Ms. Pepe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here in support of ending the public health emergency in Washoe County and opening the county up. I was a nurse for 48 years, and I have a good amount of knowledge on the spread of infection, how to prevent all that. Hand washing is the best thing that people can do. That is evident. And the fact that there are many doctors who have stated that the so-called vaccine is an experimental drug. And you -- people should not be forced to take the shot. There's many things in it that are not good for you, and it doesn't prevent people from getting COVID. And I would also like to support getting the voter rolls cleaned up. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Mr. James Bentham, and he has a handout that I will distribute to the board. And up next, after Mr. Bentham, is Mr. Chris Thatcher.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham. Mr. Bentham, would you like the overhead, sir?
Good morning. James M. Bentham, for the record. I'm here to talk about opening up the county. The time has now come. Washoe County schools are teaching emotional thinking. And that type of thinking is different than critical thinking. Today, I'm asking everyone to consider the differences. Dr. Fauci now says that people need to wear two masks, not one. How many people are wearing two masks? What will be next? Will the 80-year-old Dr. Fauci recommend three masks? There is a difference between emotional thinking and critical thinking. I'm very concerned about the thinking that is being used and the basis for that, for this lockdown and the masks. I am asking this group, everyone here, to look at a document that I presented. I've asked that part of this document be passed out to everyone so that you can look at it. Review of Scientific Reports of Harms Caused by Face Masks Up to February 2021. On the last page of the handout, there is a list, a partial list of references to document what this author is saying. On the second page, it talks about the summary, the different parts. Introduction to Government's Onus to Evaluate Safety, Risk-Benefit-Harm Analysis, Healthcare, Workers', Physiological Impacts of Face Masks, and Healthy Adults'. Psychological Harm in the General Population. It continues on, and then ends with a lengthy list of references to support the documentation. The summary says, "It is a testimony to the power of propaganda, institutional capture, and the desire to socially conform that masking of the general population has successfully imposed during the COVID era. The harms of this imposition are palpable, potentially long-term and gargantuan, not the least of which is the psychological training of the public to comply to absurd measures that has direct personal negative impact." I implore the board to look at the scientific analysis of masks before you make a decision.
Next up, we have Mr. Chris Thatcher, followed by Ms. Melanie Sutton.
Mr. Thatcher. Welcome, Mr. Thatcher.
Welcome. Thank you for your time. First, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Chris Thatcher. I moved here roughly two years ago. I'll get back to that in just a moment. In the year 1855, some of my ancestors loaded up. They were living in England at the time. They got on a ship. They sailed across the Atlantic Ocean, headed for the United States of America, a land of freedom and opportunity, a land of liberty. Some of them did not make that journey. They died at sea. Once they got here, they came across the United States and joined a wagon train coming across to the Western expansion, which was not part of the United States at the time. Again, no guarantees of safety or health. 1979, my parents loaded up their family and their possessions and moved from central Utah into northern Wyoming in search of a better career, better job opportunities, again with no guarantees of safety or health. This nation was founded by people with a pioneering attitude who didn't ask whether it was safe or healthy, didn't ask for the government to step in and ensure their safety or health. I call on every one of you to open up this county. Safety and health has never been a -- should never be a concern of the U.S. government or of this commission. That's all that I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher.
Ms. Melanie Sutton, followed by Ms. Barb Mathers.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Good morning. How are you guys doing today?
Good. How are you?
You're not supposed to answer me. So I've been trying to figure out, are you guys brain-dead or cowards? After last week's meeting, Hartung, I think you're a coward. So we've been asking you guys to open up our county since December 15th. I told you I'd be back. I'd continue to be back. We would. And we brought friends this time. I don't know if you noticed, but you guys still voted to keep our county closed, and then the people, the Health Department kicked that back. So you guys just gave away your power. We elected you to work for the people. You're supposed to work for the people. And I'm sorry, Lucy, this isn't your chambers. This is our chambers. And you wanted to talk crap to us last week on Thursday, saying that we couldn't clap? We are here for you to listen to us. And not only that, you said you were taking notes. Well, you sure the hell aren't listening to us. So what are they, love notes? To who? Because you're not listening to us. If you're taking notes, you should be listening to all the people with the facts. Or research yourself. You turned off my mic? So not only that, I could speak loud enough, I think. Not only that, but you guys, so this is the vaccines? You want us to take vaccines? This is the largest human trial ever on Earth. We don't know what the end results are going to be. We don't know what's going to happen in six months. We don't know what's going to happen in a year, two years, five years, however long. And then not only the mask, we just went to a seminar with Dr. Fong. I don't know if you know who he is, but you guys probably started doing some research since you guys are locking us down and keeping us wearing masks that are doing absolutely nothing. This right here, this is how I got in. It's see-through. Like, seriously. It's a freaking -- and not only that, but Joey Gilbert, last week, wore mesh masks. Are you just waiting for my time to be done and just keep looking at the clock? Yeah? I know. You're not working for the people. Because if you don't, if you're not listening to the people, you're not working for the people, and I will bust my butt to make sure you do not get reelected. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Barbara Mathers, followed by Mr. Kenji Otto.
I want to know why we're still closed. I want to know why schools aren't open. I want to know why vaccines are being pushed. I want to know why I have to wear this on my face in order to go to the grocery store. You're literally not doing anything for the benefit of your constituents. Have you heard anybody in here say what an awesome job you guys are doing? Are they doing a great job? Has anybody patted you on the back and said, "Thank you so much for the work you're doing for your constituents"? Have they? Commissioner Hill, has anybody said you're doing a good job? Commissioner Lucy, has anybody said we agree with what you're doing? Hartung, Jung, I don't know how to say her name, sorry. Herman, Brown? Anybody? Has anybody said you guys are doing a good job? Jeanne is working, she's trying, she's pushing, she's trying. But the rest of you, I want to know what you're getting out of keeping us locked down. What are you getting, Commissioner Lucy, for keeping us locked down? Because this is not good for any of us. Children are committing suicide, left and right. Vegas has opened their schools because of an insane number of suicides. Did you know that, Commissioner Hill? They're opening their schools because children are committing suicide. Do you think that's different in northern Nevada? Do you think children are committing suicide in our state, in northern Nevada, because they're not able to go to school, because their parents are at work, they're home by themselves? I'm a mom. I have a four-year-old and a nine-year-old. I'm homeschooling my nine-year-old because I don't want him to go to school in prison. I don't want him to go and have to have a mask on his face eight hours a day. I work from home. I flip furniture. Guess how easy it is to homeschool my child and work? Any guesses? Do you guys have a freaking clue how hard it is to work and homeschool my child? Any idea? I'm literally at the end of my freaking rope, on a daily basis, dealing with all of this garbage. Commissioner Lucy, you need to look at me when I'm talking. Yes, you do. You need to open up. Masks need to be gone. If people want to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. That's totally up to them. They should not be mandated. They should not be forced. We should not have to wear one of these to get in here. If you want to wear a mask and be afraid, that's totally up to you. COVID is not something to be afraid of. Masks should not be forced. Our county needs to open. Our state needs to open. We've been following California the whole time, all of 2020. We followed Newsom. Now they're opening. They're planning to be open completely 100% by June. Sisalak has no end in sight with this being finished. Why can't we follow California now? I want to know what you guys are getting out of keeping the state closed, because you're definitely benefiting yourselves and not listening to constituents. Not one of us has said you're doing anything that we agree with. Open us up and get rid of masks.
Next up, we have Mr. Kenji Otto, followed by Ms. Aya Peacock.
Good morning. Good morning. This morning, I want to talk about COVID, as well as opening up the county. Last, at the emergency meeting, the definition of a group was eight they wanted to go to, and it was, and you mentioned 10. I also want to reiterate that the group started at 16 and not include children under 16. The other thing is that I want to let you know that, so I've been out of work since July last year, and I finally got my money in January, and I had a, or was it February? Anyway, I had to talk to an adjudicator, and in that conversation with that adjudicator, she admitted openly to me that she's an illegal alien. So I just want to make it clear that these people coming across the border that are invading our country are taking our jobs, and the state of Nevada is assisting them. I would have liked that job. I believe I'm qualified for it. But no, I guess I wasn't qualified because I'm not an illegal alien. I'm a legal alien. I came to this country legally. So open up the county, please. And I probably won't be the only one that says, "Please." But you know, the people we really need to be yelling at or the person is the governor. The governor has overstepped his bounds, and so has the school district, because there's supposed to be a 2:00 meeting today, and nobody can get in. And I am researching that and making, finding out if they have a legal right. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to, and I have already been called a potty attorney. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm sure it's not good. But the fact of the matter is, is that we do need to open up the county. And I mentioned that last time I went, visited four stores, large stores, and yesterday I visited two stores. I even talked to the, I talked to assistant managers and managers. Not one of them, nobody asked me to put a mask on. And I walked around the place without a mask. I don't need to wear a mask. And I appreciate the fact that people do want to wear one, but I'm not trying to be rude, Kitty. I'm just simply trying to express my free rights in this country that I came to and that I served for over 20 years, to protect freedom of speech and property and all the others freedoms that we're supposed to have that we have been taken away from us. So that's all I have to say for the moment. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Peacock, followed by Mr. Paul White.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about our future. Please open Washoe County. What the government is doing to us, the people, is against humans and against humanity. Animals have better life than us, the people, right now. Is this what our children have to look forward to? False imprisonment and forced vaccinations that are not FDA-approved? We don't know what will happen to us in the long run after these vaccines, cancer, perhaps, infertility. No one knows. Whatever it is, the government will not be responsible or held reliable for the damages done to our bodies from these vaccines. Please stop mandatory mask-wearing. Our God-given rights are to breathe oxygen, not carbon dioxide, which is a poison and will cause carbon dioxide toxicity in the long run. People are not trees and cannot process carbon dioxide. We are killing ourselves and our lungs slowly by your illegal mandates. Masks and vaccines are against my religion. Jesus is my savior, not your mask. Please open Nevada. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Paul White, followed by Ms. Kelsey Schroeder.
I just don't understand the direction the Commissioners go. About a year ago, we were working with a group with our foundation on the sewage lakes right alongside the road up there in North County. And in talking with the people there about how it got that way, there's more than one firsthand account of more than one of you sitting here today about taking direct bribes from the developers. And then we get to the homeless issue, and Mr. Hartung, you recall, you showed up at a Patriots' meeting in Sparks here about a year ago, and you spoke with great confidence, absolutely knowing nothing about homelessness. And I talked to you after the meeting, and I said, "We need to debate this publicly because you're so miseducating the public." I've worked with homeless for 40 years. And you said, "Oh, I certainly would with people standing all around you." I said, "I'll contact your office," which I did, in which case you immediately backed out of your willingness to debate it publicly. And this thing with the mask, about giving up your authority to these other people, look who you're giving it up to? This Mr. Dick, the health guy, he's nothing resembling a doctor. And Ms. McNeil, where do I begin? After a career and education, I've never known a more unqualified superintendent, so unqualified that the search firm they hired didn't even put her in the top six candidates, and yet they hired her. Why on earth would you folks want to listen and get your direction on opening the county up from people that don't know anything? It's just like you don't. You don't have to sell your character. You don't have to sell your integrity, your honesty, just because you get elected. Just do what you do with your children, with your neighbor, with your family. Tell the truth. If it's right, it's right. If it's wrong, it's wrong. But this homeless thing, like I say, I spoke to you twice a month ago. We've got hard proof of a program that costs nothing that gets them off the We've got hard proof of a program that costs nothing, that gets them off the street instantly and has for decades. Would cost you nothing to have tried it? And you wouldn't try it? You wouldn't answer an email? I mean, Ms. Herman, I've heard good things about you. I couldn't understand why you wouldn't get back. What on earth would you have to lose by saying, "Tell me about something that works with the homeless and costs nothing and we haven't tried"? What, what are we so afraid of? But we need to be afraid of, of not trying these things. So there, there's answers, there's answers. And like I say, you wouldn't tell your children, your grandchildren, to deal with their issues like you're dealing with ours.
Ms. Kelsey Schroeder, followed by Ms. Sasha Osorio.
Welcome, Ms. Osorio.
My name is Kelsey Schroeder, for the record. I am here once again requesting that the public health emergency be removed out of Wausau County, that we open up. I agree with everyone that, you know, people that feel they need masks, feel they need to do this, need to do that, are going to do that, and the people that don't, aren't going to, and it's already happening. So why are we going to argue any further? We might as well just move forward and just, you know, allow people to take responsibility for themselves. One of my biggest concerns, though, with the masks is the children. A new study involving over 25,000 school-aged children shows that masks are harming school-aged children physically, psychologically, and behaviorally, revealing 24 district health issues associated with wearing masks. The health issues and impairments observed in these studies were found to affect 68% of masked children who are forced to wear a face covering for an average of four and a half hours per day. The study also includes 17,854 health complaints submitted by parents. Some of the health issues found in the study, including increased headaches, difficulty concentrating. So the increased headaches is 53%, difficulty concentrating is 50%, drowsiness and fatigue is 37%. Excuse me if I say this wrong, but malese is 42%. And nearly a third of children experienced more sleep issues than they had previously, and quarter of the children developed new fears. That is a huge concern of mine. Scared of illness, scared to go outside, scared of people. Continued through these results, though these results are concerning, the study also shows that 29.7% of children experienced shortness of breath, 26.4% experienced dizziness, and hundreds of the participants experienced allocated rest, sorry, I don't understand that, but basically tightness in chest, weakness, and short-term impairment of consciousness. I have to say, I personally have major issues. I get, you know, anxiety when I'm wearing the mask, you know, I feel awkward around people. I just think we need to come back together as a community and have great results and just move forward, and that's my request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Sasha Osorio, followed by Mr. Frank Schenk.
Welcome, Ms. Osorio.
Thank you. I just want to commend you guys on taking the bash, okay? Because I've been in your position, and I know how difficult it can be. Okay, with that being said, there's a few things I wanted to highlight, okay? The first one is that I study microbiology and immunology, and I've also worked in the Level 2 lab and studied Level 3 and Level 4 labs. The whole mask thing doesn't make sense to me, and neither do the gloves. When you're exiting a lab where you're studying AIDS and herpes and all these, and Zika virus, when you exit the lab, before you even exit where you're studying, you have to take those clothes off, and there's an order that you have to do it so that it doesn't come in contact with your skin. You have to throw your mask away, you have to be careful how you take your gloves off. There's a whole protocol, it takes about 20 minutes. So I hear this guy, I don't even know his name, but I hear him talking about how we need to wear these masks, and it, again, makes no sense to me, especially if he knows anything about disease, because if he did, then he would realize how ridiculous it sounds. The next thing I wanted to talk about is that I'm lucky to be a part of a community that is very careful about what we conform to. And I have traveled to Washington, Idaho, here in California, and we don't wear masks. And we're in groups of anywhere between, I don't know, 300 to 1,000 people. And we have all had the COVID virus, including our children, and not one of my people has been hospitalized or died or severely ill. As far as the vaccine, that also goes back to the microbiology I've studied. A vaccine is to eliminate a disease. Smallpox is the biggest one, mumps, measles, and rubella. This is where you're vaccinated, and the vaccine removes the disease. My children will not ever get this shot because I know that the protocol takes eight to 10 years and millions of dollars to get a vaccine approved. And it is tested on animals before it moves to human trials, and we have missed all of that, and it makes me very nervous because your DNA and your RNA, they translate, and they transcribe and translate, and you don't know what that transcription and translation process works in a child. You want these kids to get these vaccines, but you don't know how it's going to affect them when they're teens, early twenties. So my kids will never get that vaccine, and I don't think it's fair. And I'm very pro-vaccine for all other vaccines, but not this, because it makes no sense, and it really does terrify me to give it to my three daughters, you know? I think that was about all I had to say. I really think that you guys need to end this lockdown, it's kind of ridiculous. Idaho doesn't have it. I just went to California on Saturday, and they sat us a group of 14 at the same table, no masks. And I just, I really think that you guys should take that into account. You know, I'm a mom and a student, and I have to figure out what I'm going to do with my three kids in different grades, teaching them, along teaching myself and working. So, I mean, I don't know, I wish you guys would take that into account for people that don't make that much money and how hard it is for us.
Next up, we have Mr. Frank, Frank Schenk, followed by Ms. Darla Lee.
Hi, my name is Frank Schenk. I was basically, basically here for Agenda 20, but I had to speak about the people on the mask and COVID. My wife's a, this is strongly important, my wife's a nurse at the VA Hospital. She lost a friend who was a nurse to the COVID, leaves behind a son. I know two people that have been in the hospital since December. They both were not able to eat for two months, no food, no nothing. They had to have dejections to be able to eat. And it's really rough to see them. When you talk to them on the phone, they can only talk for a few minutes because they're out of breath. You know, I don't understand how people are so against these masks. I defend the masks, 100%. My son is autistic with autism. He goes to school, and he wears the masks. He gets through the day, he does it. You know, those health workers are out there risking their lives, and, you know, we need to stick with the science. I understand the energy that you put in, and I understand maybe some things could open up. Another thing, my son was on internship, making ventilators. They're working around the clock making those ventilators, saving people's lives. So despite the opposition that you've had, I, you know what, if I was protecting people, I'll wear this mask, I'll wear it. And I believe in the science, and I believe it helps, you know? And I would love to have people that face that nurse who leaves behind a son because of COVID. I will speak of another item. Our son who is autistic, I really wish there was money for the state to have, rather than having like the two private facilities, Dornan Behavior and West Hills. They don't want to take him because he's too violent. Wausau County has, when you, their facilities are not prepared for kids with autism. We, our house is in lockdown mode. When we have incidents, we really have to deal, because there's really no help in Wausau County. I hope, I did put my phone number down to free, but on Agenda 20, I'll be speaking, and Frank Schenk, if you want to reach me about that, that's a really big subject for me. If we could help with people with special needs and help the sheriff's office. Anyway, thank you for listening, I'm, I think, what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ms. Darla Lee, followed by Mr. George Lee.
Good morning. We've heard a lot of comments in a negative vein, and I totally support people that have spoken about opening up Wausau County, and I am also support removing the onerous mask mandate. But I would also like to give the board the opportunity to hear something more positive. And since my husband and I cannot stay for this to come up, Item 9 and 10 has been something that we have been waiting to have some action on for a long time. So I would like to urge the board to support the items regarding Wild Creek Golf Course. The Mazzagoff Management has done a great job for Wild Creek after the Duncan Management had to close down because of the COVID rules. So again, it's been a long time coming, and I know this is just the beginning stages, but I really urge your support of 9 and 10 to, for a project that has been before this board many times. And Wild Creek is my neighborhood, and I want to see the golf course maintained. And the proposals that should be in the future, I understand, should be concerning also a combination of mass management with First T, which would make that golf course a First T home, perhaps, hopefully. That has been our wish and desire, and what we've been working toward for a long time. This golf course has been a great community asset, and since it now only has the southern portion, the design has been revised so that it can be more useful and open space, which is very important to our neighborhood, which is very closely packed. And now we have a, the whole northern section, as you well know, has been turned into a construction site. And for the next four months, we are having to close Sullivan, and that means that the HOA where I reside will have only one entrance and exit for all of those months, the whole summer. So I would plead, actually, with the board to at least give us the satisfaction of seeing that our little golf course is maintained in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Mr. George Lee, followed by Ms. Stacy Schaefer.
Welcome, Ms. Lee. I have a couple, George Lee, in Sparks. I have a couple of subjects. I concur with Darla about the golf course, that it's been a long haul, and it's going to be profitable, it's going to be a great teaching aid for the students. I'm wondering how they're going to get the students, I heard that First T was going to run through all the 4th graders, teach them how to play golf. I don't know if that's still a plan or not, but that would be great. But I'm still wondering when they're going to do that, and, you know, are they going to do it at after-school or during school hours? Are they going to bus the kids in? Are they going to do just some logistics, that's all? The second thing is, you know, this vaccine, I, I really hope you guys aren't even considering the idea of vaccine passports or, or even supporting that, because you have tremendous power. You have a lobbyist that goes to Carson City and talks to those group of cats, I mean, you know, like herding cats, okay? And that as a government entity, you get lots more weight to your, when you make a speech, or you make, your lobbyist talks to the people, they're given a lot more credibility than the public is. Which is, you represent us, and this is kind of a representative thing. But I'm kind of concerned about this vaccine, well, this inoculation, it's not a vaccine. We don't know, I mean, have you checked your back lately? Because this RNA could be changing your DNA. It could be triggered by something, and you could have a third arm growing out of your back. Have you checked? You know, that's, that's the future, it's called the future. We don't know what's in the future. But I would be very, very wary about asking teachers to take a vaccine after they've tested positive, because, and then saying they can go back to work. Because they are not, for at least two weeks, they are not in any way protected from having the COVID or spreading it. And it could also react, these inoculations could react with the COVID, and we could have a lot of openings on the teachers' board, you know, on the, you know, the teaching roster, because they'll all be, you know, taken out because of various implications of this virus. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Next up, we have Ms. Stacy Schaefer, followed by Ms. Lillian Gustafson.
Welcome, Ms. Schaefer.
Good morning. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this has been mentioned already, but did you guys hear the breaking news this morning about how the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has been halted due to blood clots? Now that the vaccines are factually proven unsafe, why would you want to put us, Wausau County residents, in possible harm's way? It's time to rethink getting Wausau County vaccinated at such ridiculous rates before opening back up. And if the vaccines actually work, why are the vaccinated, why do they still need to adhere to the social distancing, mask-wearing, and all the other restrictions? Like, where's the logic behind that? I was here last Thursday, and I just want to remind how health and medical freedoms should be acknowledged, enforced, and respected. My body, my choice. So have you acknowledged my body, my choice last week? But yet, you still want to mandate what we can and can't do? That's extremely hypocritical. Think of what these mandates are doing to our children. We don't want to put more fear into our children with everything going on these days. Let's let our kids be kids again. I did want to bring up a point Ms. Kitty Jung said last week. You talked about how people should not go to work if they are sick, with any illness, and how that could be somewhat careless. But some of us, middle-class working folks and single-income families, where we value mothers staying at home with our kids, we can't afford to take off work when we have sicknesses, more so speaking of common colds and flus. I moved here from Ohio six years ago. I was so proud to become a Wausau County resident and to be able to live in this beautiful area. Once this pandemic started and we started dealing with all of these restrictions, I was almost thinking about moving to a state where freedoms are still a thing. But now, I'll continue to fight for our freedoms, especially for the sake of my son's generation. I would just like to remind you all to take in all of our words. We are paying for your salaries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Lillian Gustafson.
Welcome, Ms. Gustafson.
Good morning. So, hello, my name is Lillian, and I am 15 years old at the moment. I'm here today to talk about the effects of masks in my everyday life. So I started high school this year, and it has been a very stressful school so far. In the previous years, I was a good student and did well in classes, but since COVID began, my grades have dropped significantly. I thrive in school, not online school or the hybrid schedule. I thrive in school, not online school or the hybrid schedule. And with masks, our identities are concealed, and it's hard to make friends when everyone blends together. Wearing a mask for eight hours straight is insane to me. We can't use the locker rooms and have to do PE in clothes and shoes we wear to school. We even wear masks to PE. We don't have access to lockers either, so we're stuck carrying around our belongings. My backpack weighs about 15 pounds, which is stressful. One-way hallways and social distancing, it hasn't been the most exciting year. I ask you all today to please consider easing some of these restrictions and open back up Washoe County for the sake of freshmen everywhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson.
Next up via Zoom, we have Mr. Joshua Purdy.
Mr. Purdy.
It's Anne Marie Grant, for the record. I don't know why it says that.
Ms. 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 Grant, the floor is yours.
Anne Marie Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno police officers. Jorge Apuricio, David Tallman, Richard Maxwell, and Christopher Good. Hogtied by, then asphyxiated at Washoe County Jail by four deputies, Brandon Quinn, Timothy Sanger, Wayne Westerwood, and Paul Hubbell, who went on to asphyxiate, Dustin Thompson. I'd just like to say, it totally disgusts me when you put on the consent agenda, as a consent agenda item lawsuits. The county should know when they're paying out money for the wrongdoings of public servants. My brother died at the jail under your watch and all of you were neglecting your duties under NRS 211.020. I noticed in the article I mentioned last week that was written five years ago, they mentioned the L bracket bunks at the jail on the beds. Well, five years later and they still aren't fixed, what are you all doing about it? Nothing. Have a good day.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right, seeing nothing further, we'll close public comment and bring them back to the board. Before we move on to public, our, our next item, I'm gonna take a quick break for a bathroom break. Five minutes. We'll be back at 11:38. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could get everybody to grab their seats as soon. I know we have our last commissioner and our attorney coming back down here briefly. Mr. Manager, you wanna open and jump in here? All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call our meeting back to order. Thank you for allowing us the brief recess. We are now on to our next agenda item. I'm gonna take a few things out of order here. I'm gonna pause on item four and five. I'm gonna, we're gonna jump to item six really quickly. And then we'll come back to items four and five. Mr. Manager, if you could take us into item six, sir.
Executive Director of Art Town to update the commission on the operational plans of Art Town 2021. Ms. McMillan is here in the chambers.
Welcome, Ms. McMillan. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you. I've just gotta pick this up so I know how to do this. Okay, I'm gonna try and work it out. Good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Beth McMillan. I am the Executive Director of Art Town. And I am so pleased to be here in person. It just feels like a really breakout moment for me to be in front of, of all of you. So thank you for allowing me to come here in person and make this presentation. Before I make my presentation, there are some thanks I would like to, to make. I would like to thank Nancy Lewenhagen. She is on the Art Town Board of Directors and has been absolutely instrumental into, in our plans. And she's just been a great, great board member. So thank you very much to Nancy. I would also like to thank the commissioners for your in-kind contribution of $66,340 to waive the rental up at Rancho San Rafael Regional Park this summer. I believe we're going to have an extraordinary in-person Art Town event, and that is what I'm here to tell you about today. So esteemed commissioners and county manager, thank you again for having me here. What you see up on your screen is one of the posters that we have this year for Art Town. And the theme is really about reimagining, rebirth, and just coming back. And our artist is Yvette Valenzuela. She was the artist last year, and she really didn't get an opportunity to have a real festival. So she's coming back and she's, she's gonna be our poster artist this year. She lives both in Mexico and in Reno, and she's an incredible artist. What you see now is a, a map of Rancho San Rafael Regional Park. And the inside sort of triangle, if you will, it's not really a triangle, is the actual venue where Art Town will take place. On the left-hand side, the lower left-hand side, you see a little box. That is the 40 by 40-foot stage that will be, be brought in. We're actually bringing it in from Kentucky. It's a beautiful stage, and it is the stage that Scott, from Star Sound, feels very comfortable hanging his lighting and sound instruments on. If you look just a little bit to, if you look in at the box straight on and you look to the right of, our right of that, that is where we will be parking an RV for our artist's green room. And we'll also have two pop-up tents, depending on how many artists there are. They may wanna separate out a little bit. The wheelchair that you see in that parking lot, that parking lot will be used for ADA parking. And there's a little pathway that we are going to be putting fabric, a, a certain substance on the ground that will take people on walkers and in wheelchairs and have an ADA access just to the, our right of that bathroom that exists there. That's right in front of the parking lot. And then the seating, the little pods that you see that are in black, those are actually handicap pods. So can you all see what I'm seeing? Okay. Those are all handicap seating. So we really have had to have a full ADA plan with all of this. At the back, you can see the restrooms will be located at the back, but the ADA restrooms are located closer to that seating over there. The entire field that you see, I think it's in orange, I don't know if you can see the color, that is the entire fenced-in area. Everything will be fenced in. The part of the field that is not being used for the venue will actually be used for parking. Between that and then there's additional parking that is up by the, the dog park that people will be able to use, there's gonna be ample parking. So the other advantage to this venue is it is facing northeast, which we've been told by the light, the technical sound and lights people, is the very best way for the wind. Apparently, east and west, which is both Wingfield Park and Hawkins Amphitheater, one faces one way, one the other, that, that's really not the most, the, the most sufficient for wind. So this is a very good angle. It's also a really good angle because it faces away from the neighborhood. So that is the venue. This is a sort of a little bit of a close-up of the venue to see how we're doing the pods. The pods are going to be placed six feet apart, but they're six feet apart in a checkerboard layout. So the pod closest to you directly, side by side, is actually 18 feet apart because the pod, the pod in front of you is actually on a diagonal, it's kitty corner. So it's, it's really, really spread out. The box in the middle of that venue is where lights and sound will be conducted from. And that is really the close-up of the venue. So here is the, the sort of down and dirty, the rules that we're going with. 500 socially-distanced seating, six by six pods, all being six feet apart from other pods on all sides, and there can be up to four people in each pod. We will be selling pods and not tickets. So if you've got two people in your party or four people in your party, the pod will cost the same money. These pods are clearly defined, excuse me. These pods are clearly defined in a way which will not negatively impact the field or the watering thereof. The, the venue will be fully fenced. We have secured those, the, the construction lighting from granite construction that we will be putting in parking areas and at exits. So when people leave the venue, it will be lit up. The stage is 40 by 40 feet. The stage lighting and sound is gonna be state-of-the-art by Star Sound. In addition, there will be a big LED wall. It's really a screen on the up, upstage at the back of the stage. So if you're sitting far away, you will see the artist on this big screen at the back of the stage. So we're gonna be bringing in restrooms. The restrooms will be executive restrooms because they're more sanitary than the portable porta-potties for this, while we're getting through COVID. And we will also have hand sanitizing stations. As I said, there will be a trailer behind the, the stage for the green room. And there'll be sufficient parking. There'll also be a bicycle valet at select performances because we know that many of our attendees like to, who live in the nearby neighborhoods, like to cycle to Art Town. We will have professional security. They'll be contracted to monitor ins, inside and outside the venue. And there'll be 24-hour security because all the sound and light equipment will be left throughout the month overnight. So we will have 24-hour security up there. We're working closely with RTC to arrange transportation to provide public access to the venue. We will not be selling any food on-site. That was too complicated for us to try and figure out. So we're gonna be, because Art Town's 31 days, we're gonna work with 31 restaurants and have grab-and-go picnics. And people can stop by and pick up their picnics, or they can bring their own picnic from home. Good news with the county, alcohol is allowed into the venue, but not in glass. No glass is allowed into the venue. So we will also be monitoring that. We will be working with men wielding fire who will monitor the lines because we have to be able to sell water, and we'll sell wine, beer, and sodas. We will be selling water in boxes, though, because we got away from plastic and we're not going back. We are encouraging no intermissions because during an intermission, that is when people like to congregate and gather and all go to the restroom together. So no intermissions, all the events will be done by 9:30 PM. We'll inform all the neighbors of the activity throughout the month. And all of our events that are typically free are going to be ticketed at $15 a pod. We're doing this for crowd control purposes. Also, we're doing it because we have to raise $300,000 to build this venue. We have, we have another $150,000 to raise. That's, so we've done really, really well. And the $15 a pod for our free, typically free events is really gonna help that cause. And it really is gonna help with crowd control. And I think people are gonna really like having their own space. This is the calendar of events. So you can see that it's a very full calendar. The events that are in purple, which is hard to see, so 4th of July, 30th of July, 4th of July, 10th of July, the 17th, and the 24th are all our partners, like the Reno Phil, the Sierra Nevada Ballet, and Pride. All the other events are Art Town-produced events. And the three Tuesday nights, the four, the sixth, the 13th, and the 20th are dark nights, which are gonna be great for us to have little reprieve so that we can, if there's anything we need to fix in the venue, we can. So those, that is the full venue, the full calendar of events that are gonna be up at So those, that is the full, the full calendar of events that are going to be up at Rancho San Rafael Regional Park. And for more information, you go to arttown.org. Tickets will go on sale to our members on the 26th of April, and on sale to the public on May the 3rd, and we could not be more excited. And that is my presentation, and I'd love to answer any questions that you have. You can tell I'm a little excited about this.
Well, Ms. McMillan, we do appreciate you coming this morning and spending time with us and sharing with us what the Art Town project is going to look like this coming month and this year, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition, as it always is to our community, but this year more than ever, I think it's going to reinject some positive spirits for a lot of our people. So that'll open up to the board for any questions or discussions. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Beth, this is just such a thought-out plan and just really inclusive of people who may not, even if we have lower distancing requirements by July, they may not want to be in a big crowd, and I think you've really thought of how to make people comfortable and how to ensure that they can still enjoy art and even doing that and celebrating community, and we've missed that. We need that. I think we need to come together as a community, and you're really doing that, and boy, we missed it last year. You did such a great job doing it virtually, but I'm so excited for this year. I cannot wait. The poster is beautiful, and I think that's wonderful that you let the artists redo it again, so, very thoughtful. And I just have one question on your partner performances, like Gospel Fest and the other groups, are they going to get any of the $15 admission, or are they going to have to just pay that towards the venue cost?
So Gospel Fest, we're actually presenting them, so we're actually paying them artist fees.
Great.
So that's the same as if we were bringing in any other artists. So Gospel Fest are being paid a really decent, a very good artist fee to be there on a Friday night. The Philharmonic, they are actually, what I did was I took all the expenses, the hard costs of the money we have to raise, not the waived rental, for example, but the hard costs, and I divided those by 31 days. So it's the security, the fencing, the bathrooms, the staging, all of that, and lights and sound, and they're paying 1/31 of that cost to us, and then they get all their ticket sales, and it's like a four-wall. It's like if you were renting the Pioneer Center, really.
That's awesome. It's so inclusive to ensure that we still have a variety happening during Art Town, and I'm just really excited that the county is part of this this year, so thank you.
Yeah, and you know, even if everything opened up, which I'm sure it's not going to, but if everything opened up, I am down the path, this is the plan we're doing, and we're committed, and I think people will like their own space.
All right, Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. McMillan. I, I too think it's great that you didn't sit back and wait for the world to happen to you. You decided to manifest how Art Town can be in existence for this first summer of opening post-COVID. And I want to put on the record for the board's appeasement. This did go between, before the regional parks and open spaces meeting, and they did approve this plan, and the sponsorship as well. And I don't see Washoe County as a sponsor on your website, so could we change that? Or maybe there's different levels of Art Town, but you also have one of our staff on your board, so we're more than a sponsor in some ways. So I would like to see that because I know that there has been many times that this board, during the tightest of our times, made sure that some very important special events stayed open here. The Reno balloon race, Art Town, I mean, there's been many things, and I believe that this is the summer, if I can lobby you a little bit, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board, this is the summer that government plays an important role, whether it's the RSCVA for Heads in Beds or just Washoe County with CARES funds. We need to be propping up these special events. And one of the pushbacks I get, never about Art Town, I might tell you, but there's some other region-wide special events, that I will get pushback from locals who say, "Why do you sponsor these? We would never go to these events." Well, exactly right. These aren't for you. This is because this is a tourist town, and I don't know how to explain that to anybody else in any other way. And our summer special events really define who we are as a community, and while you might not love them or go to them anymore, we do know there's international demand for these events that have really made us shine as an outlier of everywhere in the North in terms of special events. So I think we should be doing more going forward for this special event season from the different funding sources and prop these up because everyone I've talked to that's in charge of these special events, you know, most of them took a major loss last year and didn't even pay themselves because, and are still unsteady as to how they will move forward. But I believe we will lose visitors, which are Heads in Beds, which is an RSCVA function, but we also lose the excitement and the potential economic investment that people do once they've visited here and say, even Burning Man, for instance, and say, "I want my corporate headquarters here because I just love this place." I mean, out in Gerlach, ask any of the burners on the big boards, that's their, that's Mecca. That's where they're all going to live. This is, you know, it's a transformative event for them. And this board of Commissioners, I would like to see take an active role to prop those up. Not so much because it makes locals happy, but more importantly, because it makes business happy and therefore locals happy because that is paying for their essential services throughout the entire year. So, and I love the pod idea. That's the only way I would go to events now, not because I'm fearful of COVID, but because I don't like people in my space. So this is my pod, this is, you know, it's like going, taking a blanket to a concert. This is my area, don't touch it, and don't breathe on me, and don't have your kids in my area, you know? I mean, I really think this is a feature, not a bug, of your development in terms of the intimacy and the lack of jostling and crowding and moving. It just, I got to tell you a story. I went to the 4th of July music in your car that the famous developer here, Perry D. Loretto, put on down in the South, and everybody was expected to stay in their cars because the music came through your radio to watch this beautiful firework event. It was the best 4th of July I've ever been to because we were in our cars, the music was choreographed to the fireworks, and that is, for me, as an event attendee, and I will agree with the locals, I don't go to any of these, really. I mean, I'll go to a few here and there, but I, I am always happy when I do go to see new people discovering this great community, and I believe it pays off, you know, exponentially in terms of the goodwill and the potential investment of tourists that come here and find out that we've the best secret in America. So I will continue to support you and push for you and continue this Art Town for July. I know that it wakes a lot of people up, too, in terms of the local population, all the stuff you do for children, that most don't get in schools anymore, the arts, or they have parents like me that say, "Don't waste your time on art. Life is black and white." And so how can a teacher tell you got an A on that art project? That's how my mom, that's how much my mom loved art, for me. So I just love that you give a venue and a different outlook for the whole community, and that is part of our culture, and I love that this is a culture of artists. If you look at the downtown Riverside, that was the Reno City Council decades ago that invested in that and made subsidized rent for visiting artists to continue doing their work, so. And I know you were instrumental in all of those major changes, too. So I salute you, and most importantly, Commissioner, the open spaces and regional parks did endorse this project, so I hope that you will endorse it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. All right, seeing nothing further. Ms. McMillan, we really do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck this year, and have a wonderful, wonderful event.
I hope to see you all down there.
We will. We'll definitely come and partake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, this is just for discussion only, seeing that we have no public comments. So we're going to go back really quickly to item four. Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements this morning that you'd like to share?
Mr. Chair, a couple of quick things. As has been mentioned this morning, the FDA put a pause on the Johnson &amp; Johnson, or as some refer, Janssen, vaccines. The good news for our region is we're not, we were not very reliant upon that particular type of vaccine, so it should not have a broad impact on our vaccination efforts. We were using it for in-home vaccinations that REMSA was doing, and for some of our rural areas like Gerlach, where refrigeration is more of a challenge. But for the folks of Gerlach who may be concerned, because there is a vaccination pod commissioner for tomorrow there, for the community, we've made, I've heard from the Health District this morning that they will receive Pfizer vaccines tomorrow, so that's good news. They should be able to get vaccinated and without interruption due to the pause. The second announcement would be really more for the general public. We are still working with our local partners to secure the endorsements we need on the local control plan that this board asked us to develop last week. I need to say there is a chance that we will not get that completed, and if we don't, we may have to reschedule the meeting for tomorrow. So for the public, if you were planning to attend or tune in or whatever, check our website later today and just keep your eyes open about that, and we'll see how that goes. But we are in discussions today, and also since we've been in chambers, we've learned that the governor plans to make some sort of remarks later today about the local control and transition plan, so we may learn something from the governor's comments that will also impact us, and so those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say thank you to all the folks that showed up this morning to speak, and I want them to know that I am behind them on both issues that we discussed and heard. I hear you. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Harton, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. You were going to hear an item a little later on Wild Creek. We have been asking to have an MOU with Sparks to dedicate that land permanently to open space or, you know, some public use, and so I'd like staff to bring this back to us. I thought we had it craft. There is a way that I believe we can turn it over to Sparks and deed-restrict that so that it can never be anything but open space. We can never build on it, do anything different on it, other than it being either a regional park or a golf course or something of that nature, so it has to stay in the public's hands and for the public's benefit. And then I'd also like to have Mr. Solero and Mr. Smith bring back to us the process by which they would like us to engage them with respect to residential traffic control for speed bumps and stop signs and et cetera in the unincorporated area of Washoe County, and I've not seen this yet. I know everybody's busy. I know there's a lot of things going on, but I, we still need to talk about that. There's been some issues, I know, in all neighborhoods, not just mine, that need to be dealt with, and we need to understand what process it is they want us to engage them with, other than just using the MUTDC, which is the Universal Traffic Manual of how we approach these kinds of things, which I don't think, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all scenario. So those are my comments today, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner John, Commissioner Hill, do you have anything? Briefly, I wanted, one topic that has been a topic of conversation in District Two is, in Hidden Valley, there have been challenges with wild horses and along the Virginia-Foot Hill range. The county has been, for Hidden Valley specifically, a lot of the herd of, I shouldn't say herd, but the band of horses that have been sitting down towards, between Demone Ranch and Hidden Valley, have often moved in through a broken fence and an area that allows them to move kind of freely into that. This, as of this, we, by the end of this week, a horse guard should be installed, and that fence will be repaired, keeping those horses on the Virginia Range side of the mountain and not hopefully, and hopefully out of the Hidden Valley area. So we're, I want to thank staff for getting that complete. I do appreciate that. It's very timely there. As much as we love the wild horses, they do have a challenge, they do cause quite a bit of damage, you know, accidentally, but that is just something we have to deal with. So with that, hopefully that is rectified, and we will continue to work on some different issues. I have nothing else, so I'm going to close item four, and let's move to our next presentation. Mr. Manager, let's move to item five.
Item five is a presentation by Washoe County Registrar Deanna Specula and Deputy Secretary of Elections for the Nevada Secretary of State, Mark Vinton, to discuss the Washoe County voter registration list, including methods for safeguarding and maintaining the accuracy of information such as current voter addresses, inactive voters, duplicates, deaths, and other information required to be maintained and updated by state and federal laws, and a review of those laws. And we have Ms. Specula with us today in chambers.
Welcome, Ms. Specula. We do appreciate it, and thank you for appearing with you and your staff and Mr. Welshen from the Secretary of State. You know, this was a request of Commissioner Herman, but a lot of us Commissioners would benefit from an update, so thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely, and thank you, Chairman Lucy, and good morning, Commissioners, actually. Still morning, it's good afternoon. So we just want to start off by saying that I'm just here to give a presentation to the board regarding voter list maintenance activities as they're performed in Washoe County and throughout the state. Our mission statement directly influences every action and decision made in our office, and performing and reporting of the required voter registration list maintenance activities provides for facilitating elections with the utmost integrity, transparency, and accountability as stated in our mission statement. Voter list maintenance activities are performed in strict accordance with federal and state laws in conjunction with established conforming policies and procedures. Some of those that, that, some of the laws that govern how we are allowed to do voter registration list maintenance begin with the National Voter Registration Act, which is, I will be referring to as NVRA, which is also known as Motor-Voter. This act creates the requirements for voter registration list maintenance for states to maintain accurate and current voter rolls. Expanding the NVRA requirements for list maintenance to be done on a regular basis is the Help America Vote Act of 2002, which I'll probably be referring to later on as HAVA. And Title 24 of the Nevada law by statutes and Nevada Administrative Code is where most of these federal laws have been codified into state law. States are required to keep voter registration lists accurate and current, but at the same time, we must incorporate specific safeguards to remain in compliance with NVRA. Any program or activity must be uniform and non-discriminatory and completed not later than 90 days prior to a federal election. This does not mean that we cannot still remove deceased voters, that those that have moved out of our jurisdiction or act upon undeliverable mail for individuals, but any routine program that would remove or inactivate voters must be completed by 90 days prior to the election. This act also allows for removal of voters from registration lists upon request of a voter if the voter is deceased, they have been convicted of a disqualifying crime, or are judged mentally incapacitated where such removals are allowed by state law. Oops, did I press the wrong button?
I think, Ms. Specula, can we ask you questions along the way? Just, we know, we've seen how long your presentation, so I want to make sure we can get it while it's fresh in our heads. Is that okay with you?
Certainly, that's fine with me.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do you remove someone who's deceased? What's the methodology that you're using, Ms. Specula?
Well, I actually have some more information on that, and I believe Secretary of State's deputy will be commenting on that as well. There are several things that we do. First, we have a nightly upload that goes to Secretary of State's office where they do, I guess bump that information up against the Social Security Administration's vital statistics. We also do monitor the obituaries in local newspapers.
But obituaries aren't, I mean, my dad passed away this year, we did not write an obituary in local newspapers.
Yeah, that's not the only, like I said, that's only one of the tools we use. And we also rely on family members. A lot of family members do contact our office and let us know that a family member has passed away and that they need to be removed from our voting rolls.
Okay.
And so, those are the, those are our main sources of notifications that somebody has passed away and that we need to remove them from our voting rolls.
I don't know how we do this, but I think, I mean, when you were talking about the Social Security Administration, I, I think that's a, that's a good way, but I'm not sure whether, if, if the voter does not collect Social Security, there may not be much contact with the Social Security Administration because they're really not, I mean, they're, they're only paying into the Social Security system. They're not actively engaging with it.
Okay. I might, if you don't mind, have maybe Deputy Secretary for Elections, Mark Vention, if he could answer this question. He might, he knows more about, because we do rely on those reports. They do come from the Secretary of State's office. They do provide those to us. And there might be background that he can provide in more detail on that specific question.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Vention, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections, for the record. Are you able to hear me all right?
We are, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you also for having me here today, specifically in regards to how we identify individuals who are passed away or deceased. There's a number of different injects that we receive from that, the late tidied information is, as Ms. Specula just mentioned. Really, one of the primary sources we use is actually the Office of Vital Statistics here in the state. They speak directly to the primary sources, so to speak. They're talking to the morticians, to the undertakers, and a number of other individuals who deal directly with the deceased and their families. And you're absolutely right. Not everybody necessarily pays for Social Security. There are a number of individuals who pass away every year who are either homeless or maybe newly transient to the area. There are, of course, an unfortunate number of younger, non-voting age individuals that pass away as well. But the Office of Vital Statistics receives that information. They go through a process where they verify and make sure that that record is accurate. And then, there's a registrar with the Office of Vital Statistics that verifies the information and provides that to the Office of the Secretary of State. As we receive that information, and we receive that information five times a week, we receive it, we divide it up by the counties and provide that information to the clerks and registrars so that they're able to identify, again, those individuals and remove them from their voter rolls. And that is something of note that can happen all the way up to Election Day. You will hear, I suspect, in a few moments, Ms. Specula, talk about there's a 90-day blackout period that does not apply to deceased individuals. So, those, again, as these individuals are identified through the Office of Vital Statistics, it comes to us and then we pass it to the counties. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat. May, may I ask a sort of a follow-up question on that? So, does the Office of Vital Statistics, do you, do you get a list either every day or weekly or something of that nature from the medical examiners around the state that identify people who have passed away that they've issued death certificates on?
That information, Mark Vention, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections, for the record, that information is provided directly to the Office of Vital Statistics. They're the first step in confirming that those individuals, everything is in order. There's a surprising number of folks across our state who maybe share a first name or last name, or even in some cases, first name, last name, and birth date with other individuals. And it's the Office of Vital Statistics that receives the information, tries to get to the bottom, and tries to get a Social Security number if possible, validates address and any other information they can to make sure that that record is complete as possible before they provide that to us. They also receive information from the Social Security Administration and a number of other organizations as well. So, they are truly, for the deceased individuals, the main hub to validate and consolidate that information before providing it to the Office of the Secretary of State.
What happens if the person is in a neighboring state and passes away here? How do you, how do you deal with someone, let's say, from California or Utah or Arizona or Idaho, et cetera?
Frankly, I do not know the internal, all of the internal workings of the Office of Vital Statistics. I understand they have a similar process though, where there's an interstate coordination, at least from what I understand it. But again, I apologize, I don't have a lot of information on that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Specula.
Ms. Specula, thank you. Continue.
Certainly. All right. So, some of the additional requirements for NVRA, our voters must be sent a forwardable confirmation card before any action or inactive activity, or sorry, any action to inactivate or remove the voter from the voting rolls if any notification, correspondence, or election materials are returned as undeliverable. The voter's new address provided, is provided to us by the United States Postal Service or through ERIC, which is the Electronic Registration Information Center, reports which we receive. So, if these people, if we get notice that they're outside of the jurisdiction, which means, of course, Washoe County or outside of the state, we can send them a forwardable card to get the ball rolling, to get their information updated. We also can do the same thing if we are notified. We have a residency discrepancy form that we actually provide for public to be able to fill that out and provide it to us, so that we can send a forwardable card, because we must send that card out to allow the voter the opportunity to respond and provide an updated address. If the confirmation card is not returned or is returned back to us undeliverable, the voter's status is changed to inactive. If the voter does not update or appear to vote in the next two federal, general elections, the voter's record is then canceled. Of course, if the voter does respond to the confirmation card, we simply update the voter's record. It must be noted here that election correspondence and confirmation cards can be forwarded by the post office. However, all other election materials, including ballots, are not forwardable by the post office and are returned to our office and processed as undeliverable. Just to, so for your information, we did send notices out to all the voters whose ballots were returned in the primary election as undeliverable. There was over 23,000 ballots returned undeliverable after the primary election. We did send notices out to those. And of those that did not respond, we did inactivate those records. As a result, we significantly decreased the number of returned ballots for the general election. We only received a little over 12,000 ballots returned undeliverable for the general election. The NVRA also includes those safeguards under which registered voters would be able to vote notwithstanding a change of address in certain circumstances. For example, voters who move within a district or a precinct will retain the right to vote even if they have not re-registered at their new address for one last election. Also, the removal of voters for non-voting or have, for having moved can only be done after meeting certain requirements provided in NVRA. Voters cannot be removed for failure to vote except in the event that an individual has not been in contact with the applicable election office in person or in writing, or responded to a forwardable notice, and has not voted into federal general election cycles. As I mentioned earlier, we are required to maintain current and active voting rolls. And this is a list of activities we do that to meet those mandated requirements. These include daily as well as periodic programs, all of which are not new activities for us and have been fully incorporated into our ongoing department, departmental processes and procedures. These have been in place, most of them, for over a decade. Some of the daily maintenance activities that we perform are processing new voter registrations or updates to current voter's registrations, which includes anything up from mailing address, residence address changes, to party affiliation changes. We also ran an in-county duplicate analysis for potential duplicate records in our voter registration database. We rely on state reports through HAVA services, which we process daily. This includes in-county and cross-county duplicate voters, vital statistic reports, and potential ineligible voters, which are those who, whose identification numbers, such as a driver's license or Social Security number, do not match what we have in our system. We also process obituaries and those deceased notifications daily. And finally, registration notifications from other states, we do receive those. And once we are, we receive those, and those are notifications from states letting us know that somebody has registered in a different state, we are able to remove those voters and cancel them from our voting rolls. In non-election years, which are typically odd-numbered years for us, voter list maintenance projects include, as we were mentioning before, and you'll probably hear this a lot, ERIC. It's the Electronic Registration Information Center reports. We have been doing those twice a year, but we are planning on increasing some of those reports to every other month. And hopefully, at some time in the future, we'll be doing all of those reports every other month. We also rely on the National Change of Address Program, which is through the post office, who provide us with reports telling us a voter has moved or may have moved out of the state or our jurisdiction. We also process inactive voter mailings and cancellation of voters who have been inactives, been in that inactive status for two federal election cycles. We do perform that prior to each, going into each election year. Election years are even number years where we still perform ERIC, where we do the ERIC Reports Program twice a year during the election year. And another thing that we have done in the past and are continuing to do is for sample ballot and mail ballots that are returned as undeliverable, we are sending a notice out to those voters after each election to ensure that we're catching those people from the primary election, so we are not wasting our money and effort sending out election materials to somebody who's, who we know that their address is not necessarily up to date with our office. And again, during an election year, we do continue to perform and perform that daily maintenance activities, as well as the programs mentioned, that I just mentioned, but we must complete any routine program that would remove or inactivate voters 90 days prior to any election. In 2012, Nevada was one of seven states that formed ERIC, the Electronic Registration Information Center, which has grown to the current 30 states and the District of Columbia. I believe that's current, and I will have Deputy Secretary Mark Vention will probably correct me if I was wrong on the number of states, but that is what, last number I knew was, was 30 states and the District of Columbia. He'll be speaking a little bit more about ERIC. And so, I just wanted to provide here some of the reports that we do receive through the ERIC projects, which include in-state updates, which are individuals registered in Nevada who appear to have moved to different addresses within our county or within the state. Cross-state updates, individuals who have registered, who are registered in Nevada and now appear to be registered in another member state. Duplicate voter analysis, deceased voters, based on the Social Security Death Index. And they're also adding the National Change of Address Program to our ERIC reports as well. So, we'll be getting more information, more often and more currently from the post office than just during an election year. And then, at this time, I'm going to introduce Assistant Registrar of Voters Heather Carmen, who will provide a look into the life of voter registration application and will follow up with some statistics regarding voter list maintenance activities in 2019 and 2020.
Good morning, Chair Lucy and Commissioners. My name's Heather Carmen, Assistant Registrar of Voters for Washoe County. And I'm going to talk about what happens when a voter registration application comes into our office. We can get a voter registration application many ways. It can be through automatic voter registration, through DMV, or it could be one that was mailed to us. It could be one that the individual filled out an online application through the Secretary of State's website. Once it's injected into our voter registration database, it's then made sure that the street address is correct, because we have a street file in there and you can't just register at a business address, it won't accept it. So, then, once that information is put onto our voting rolls, every night, it gets uploaded to the Secretary of State's website through a program called HAVA Services. And it's cross-checked to make sure that somebody doesn't register under a false name, date of birth, things like that. It also double-checks to make sure that they're not registered somewhere else in our state. And also, those nightly uploads that happen, it even touches existing records. It just keeps going. So, it's constantly going and checking. Same thing, you know, with the, to see if the person has passed away through Social Security Administration, through their vital statistics. Then, what we do once that has been vetted, essentially, then a voter notification card is sent out. This is another way that we can double-check to make sure that the address is correct. And if you do receive a voter notification card for somebody that doesn't live there, please return it to us, inform us, so that we can get that corrected. But that's another way to kind of give you a heads up of, hey, something's changed on your voter record, or someone has attempted to, to register there. Another project that we do, in a way, is our sample ballots. Before we even send out the sample ballot, we send our entire voter data file to our vendor and they cross-check it with the USPS. And if there is a change in address, then that person does not get a sample ballot. We get that file back and then we act upon it appropriately. It's the same thing with our absentee ballots and our mail-in ballots. If we did send one out and it comes back undeliverable, we, we have to act upon it. And that's by inactivating the person and sending them out an address confirmation card. And as your information sits on our, on our voting rolls, it's constantly being bumped up against the ERIC, the NCOA, or HAVA Services, so that we can constantly get updates and act upon them. Now, hopefully, I pressed this right. Nope, nope. Okay. Now, based on all this, and this is just our list maintenance projects, this does not include the, the daily work that we do. But from 2019 to 2020, we sent out a total of 72,599 address confirmation cards that are forwardable to find out, hey, are you still there? Have you moved? Maybe this family member has passed away, please let us know. Of that, we received 40,403 confirmations back from voters saying, nope, everything's good. And we received back 14,568 saying, you know what? Yes, please remove me from your voting rolls. 12,147 were returned undeliverable, so they will stay inactive. And after two federal election cycles, they'll be removed. And 5,481 being status unknown is because people didn't respond. So, they're going to stay inactive until we get some sort of confirmation that they're still there. So, in total, we've removed 29,506 voters just off of list maintenance projects. And as you can see the breakdown of how many have moved out of county, deceased, or failure to respond to one of our cards. So, they got removed from our voting rolls. Some are for guardianship, and a few have been, you know, requested that they be removed. So, that's my portion of it. And so, now, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Vention for further comments.
Mr. Vention.
Perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lucy and Commissioners. Mark Vention, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections, for the record. Thank you for inviting me again to speak today. After listening to that presentation by Registrar Specula and Ms. Carmen, I have a few comments that I'd like to share with you. Before I do, though, I'd like to quickly introduce myself. I'm a married father of three boys, my wife and children, and I live in Douglas County. Part of my appointment as the Deputy for Elections is past October, I worked for the Secretary of State as her Deputy for Operations. Before that, I spent more than 20 years as an active-duty United States Marine, which included numerous overseas deployments and combat tours. In fact, somewhere between 25 to 30% of my military career was spent overseas. I only mention that to highlight the fact that I personally understand the challenges that our service members face, a concern that was brought up earlier during public comment, and to stress that, like the Secretary and the rest of the members of the Elections Division, I take my devotion to the integrity of our elections very seriously. So, first and foremost, I want to thank Registrar Specula and Ms. Carmen for their detailed explanation of the requirements regarding voter registration list maintenance. List maintenance is really one of the underappreciated cornerstones of our electoral process, and as you heard, it is strictly guided by federal and state laws. In addition to being required by law, though, all of us involved in the process also want to do it. Why? Because we recognize that everyone benefits from clean voter rolls. For example, clean voter rolls save considerable money. For example, during the 2020 general election, we spent an average, on average, $1.46 on the ballot paper printing and postage for every mail-in ballot sent across the state. Clean voter rolls prevent a waste of money by ensuring that you not send ballots to people who have moved or passed away. As of April 1st of this year, Washoe County had a little more than 316,000 active registered voters, meaning it would cost more than $460,000 to deliver ballots to those voters. That cost is something that we recognize we can have a major influence on by removing inactive or canceled voters from our rolls as soon as we are legally allowed to do so. After the economic downturn of 2020, all of us are particularly cognizant of our obligation to help save taxpayer dollars. Clean voter rolls also contribute to voter confidence. The cleaner the rolls are, the less likely we are to see pictures of any ballots discarded in front of an apartment complex, or to hear stories about ballots riding for a previous tenant. This is particularly tricky here, where we have such a transient population, meaning the work is an endless and ongoing process. Leaderless maintenance occurs every day, even during non-election years. Thankfully, it is already part of the daily workload for county election officials and their staff. It is also worth noting that this process requires the close examination of personally identifiable information, or PII, which is why only official election staff members are allowed to work on the process. Doing so ensures the absolute security of our private voter information. We simply cannot risk volunteers having unrestricted access to a list containing all of our names, addresses, Social Security numbers, birthdays, phone numbers, email addresses, and other information. The list maintenance process is a daily and ongoing process, so it is never finished. But rest assured, we strive to get as close to perfection as possible and will continue to do so. As mentioned, we have numerous tools to help us in this. As mentioned, we have numerous tools to help us in this effort. The Electronic Registration Information Center, ERIC, is one of those. ERIC is a nonprofit organization with the sole mission of assisting states' efforts to improve the accuracy of their voter rolls and to increase access to voter registration for all eligible citizens. We were one of the founding members, and I am one of its board members now. It works by enabling secure coordination between states to identify voter registration discrepancies. For example, if a voter moves from Washoe to Texas, ERIC would identify that duplicate registration in Texas, provide it to us at the Secretary of State's office in a report, and we would provide that information to Registrar Spicula and her team, enabling them to address it. In fact, it is a requirement of the program that we must address the discrepancies that ERIC identifies, and we have to provide reports explaining how we've added, acted on that information. Second, I would like to acknowledge those ladies and gentlemen who have taken an active role in our electoral process and have voiced their concerns to this board. I've watched some of your board meetings, and I've listened closely to their concerns. And to those individuals who spoke during public comment, their concerns echo what I've heard from others over the last few months. I want to reassure you that we are listening and that we are taking steps to address their concerns. These steps include re-examining our list maintenance processes and procedures to identify areas of improvement, to continue investigating Election Integrity Violation Reports, or EIVRs, that are the primary means for the public to notify us of alleged violations of our elections law, and the conduct of a detailed review of elections regulations. Starting this past January, we began reviewing the entirety of the Nevada Administrative Codes relating to Title 24 of the Nevada Revised Statutes. This regulatory review will continue through the summer and will include workshops where we will invite the public to take part in the discussion and to provide feedback. Our intent is to have updated regulations that are developed through close coordination with the clerks and registrars and the input of the public by November of 2021. Doing so will provide clarity for any elections officials and the public alike as we move into the 2022 election cycle. Finally, I want to state that we have an excellent relationship with your elections team, and we will continue to work hard with them to ensure that the 22 and 24 election cycles are secure. There are numerous potential changes to our electoral process that may come from the ongoing legislative session, and we'll be sure to work closely with them to inform your constituents of whatever changes the legislature enact. I firmly believe that our plan to examine and refine our processes and procedures, combined with an increased voter education campaign to explain what the law requires, will continue to make our elections even more secure, and will help bolster our voter competence. Thank you again for allowing me time to speak here today, and I will be available for questions. At this time, I will turn it back over to Registrar Spicula.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Spicula.
All right, thank you. And just in closing, I also wanted to acknowledge some of our citizens that have come to help and to offer their assistance by volunteering, and although we do thank them for offering to assist us with voterless maintenance, we do have our trained staff, and the workload is already within the scope of what we do on a daily and weekly, monthly, every project that we do. This is something we've been doing for, you know, since I've been here for a decade. This is something that's already incorporated. My, my staff is qualified and heavily trained to, in order to be able to make sure that we're complying with NVRA and that we are doing our voterless maintenance, maintenance projects appropriately. If volunteers do want to help, we have other means of volunteering to help in our office. One of the biggest things, and one of the things I believe really engages our citizens and they learn a lot about the elections and how we run them, and just being also there to help our citizens vote, is becoming a poll worker. You get a lot of information about our office and how the election process works, you learn about our equipment and the steps that we take to ensure the security of our votes in this county. So I very much encourage people to become poll workers, and again, that's just, it's such a wonderful thing to do to help enable your other fellow citizens exercise their right to vote. And at that, I just also want to thank Deputy, Deputy Secretary Vlaschen for being here and making the time to, to come and speak and, and share some of the information that he has as far as what the Secretary of State's office, their role in helping and to assist us in voter roll maintenance. With that, I'm here for any questions, if there's any.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Spicula. We do really appreciate the, the presentation this, this afternoon. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So during the presentation, what I did is I got on the Washoe County Voter Registrar's website, and there is a place where you can check the status of your registration. I plugged my father's name in along with his birth date. He is no longer registered. I did not contact the registrar, we did not do an obituary, he was, of course, issued a death certificate. But, but he's not there. So, well done. That's, and that's, I, I tested it myself on, on a family member that I know that none of those things occurred with. So there was no contact whatsoever. We, we did, of course, and, and obviously, the Social Security Administration was contacted because we had to inform them that he had passed so that he no longer would receive those payments, because obviously, then those would have to be paid back because they were all direct deposits. So we didn't, we didn't want to have to deal with that. So we did contact the Social Security Administration, but that's all, that's all we did. But I do have some other questions for you, Ms. Spicula. And you and I talked about this during the last election. I know people who received two ballots. And so, and I know that that person didn't try to vote twice, I know for a fact, but what do you do in those cases? When, when this, when this occurs, what, where's the glitch in the system and how do we fix that?
Deanna Spicula, Registrar of Voters for the record. There are definitely there-
This was in the primary election, not the general.
In the primary?
Yes.
So there were some things, of course, us doing all mail-in ballots for all voters in Washoe County, actually throughout the state, it was something that was new, and we have not done that before, before you needed to request. We had a no-fault request system for absentee ballot, but because of COVID restrictions, we were, we did perform both the primary and the general election under the all-mail-in framework of running an election. Our systems were not specifically developed to handle that, especially with the addition of same-day registration and the extension of people being able to update their information. In prior elections, you, there was a closed registration date, and there was a date by which you had to make those changes or register. This election, there was not. So when our system received information from another, like somebody changed their party or their residence address, or they just went ahead and submitted another application because they wanted to make sure that they were registered or that their information was updated, our system automatically would trigger a ballot to be issued to that person. It wasn't, it wasn't, our system's pretty old, and it wasn't set up to necessarily handle all mail-in elections.
So, so I know for a fact that there was no change in party, I know for a fact that there was no change in address, but yet somehow the system triggered a second ballot being sent out.
So again, that would be on an individual voter, by voter basis, depending on, like I said, if they had, even if they didn't change anything, if they went to the DMV and they were autom, you know, so we were sent automatic voter registration information from the DMV for that voter. It could have, we get that information, it gets processed into our database, that could trigger another voter, or another, would have triggered another ballot being issued to that voter.
Okay.
Again, the first ballot that was sent would then be suspended. There is never two active ballots for any one voter that, that are out there. So if another ballot is triggered and sent to another, to a, to a voter, the first ballot is suspended.
Do we prosecute them?
What's that?
Do we prosecute them? If they, if they mail in two ballots?
If they were to return, like fill out and return both ballots?
Both, yes.
That would be turned over to the Secretary of State's office for investigation.
Okay. Okay, so I have just another question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Sorry, Commissioner John. How do we ensure, because we've heard stories, and I, and I, I don't know because I haven't seen this personally, but I've heard stories where people who have lived at addresses for many years suddenly get multiple ballots for other people who don't live at that address. Now, let me, let me tell you a fast story of something that, that we just dealt with. With respect to Dieter, we got a person who did not live at our address, and we got, we got information on them. It was fraud. It was absolute fraud. We turned it over to the sheriff's office, they were able to cut it off immediately, which I commend them. This person was not able to, they actually used a person's name who lived in southern Nevada and then used our address to file for unemployment compensation, and, and the person who lived in southern Nevada was not unemployed. So, I, I know that this kind of stuff in the system gets, gets handled, and I, and I believe blessedly, we, we contacted the sheriff's office and got it cut off before any funds could be dispersed. That said, how do you, how do you respond to folks who say they're getting multiple ballots for people that don't live at these addresses?
Deanna Spicula, again, for the record. We do have some automatic processes that do happen, so once an application, under what Heather was talking about, the life of a voter registration application, once we accept that voter registration into our system, it sends out a voter notification card. This is not a forwardable card from, for the post office, so seemingly if somebody did not live at that address and the post office did not have that information for that voter, it should be returned to us undeliverable. However, there are cases where it still gets delivered to the, to the residents. So if, if somebody does receive that, if they write, you know, not at this address, send it back to the postal system and gets it back to us, then we can start the process of reaching out to that voter to get the corrected information. Again, we have to take those steps, and we do have a residency discrepancy form that we have on our website that people can go on and fill out and send it to us and say, hey, I don't believe, you know, this person's registered here, they don't live here. So we can start the process. There's other things, if a ballot's, you know, is sent, again, if they write not, not at this address, or if they even bring it, bring it in to us, bring it down to the office and let us know, this person received this ballot, they do not live at this address, bring it down to us, we can start the process of sending out that card and making sure that we're at least reaching out. We have to attempt to reach out to the voter to get a corrected information, you know, corrected address. We don't know if it was a data, data entry error, if they just, we have people who sometimes get their, their house number wrong, especially younger students when they're registering at their parents' house, sometimes they'll, you know, transfig, you know, transpose a few numbers. There's a lot of different reasons that, that, that could occur. The, the one thing I can, I can ask everybody to do is please let our office know. Bring that information to us, send it through, you know, write not at this address, put it back, you know, give it back to the post office, have it returned to us. Once we have that information, we can start to act. But unless we get that information back, we don't, you know, we don't know what we don't know. We can't act on something if we don't have the information to actually begin the process and start reaching out to those people to see if we can get an update. If we don't get information from them, or if we don't get an update from them, we can inactivate them. They're still eligible to vote at that point, however, we won't be sending ballots to them, we won't be sending ballot, sample ballots to them. Then they will stay in that inactive status and they will stay there unless they update their information with us when they appear to vote, or they will fall off the rolls after they've been inactive for two federal general elections. So those are, that's kind of the process. Again, I know people want to call up and just say, hey, this person doesn't live here, can you cancel him? Unfortunately, we can't. We have to have, there is a process and we have to reach out to that voter. We can't just assume that somebody isn't where they say they are based on a phone call, because you wouldn't want somebody to do that to you. You wouldn't want somebody to call up and say, you know, you know, I, you know, Mr. Brown doesn't live at this address, and you know, please cancel his voter registration. That's not, you know, that's not fair to him, because maybe he does and it's somebody, he's disgruntled. So we have to make sure that we are reaching out to those, those individuals to give them an opportunity to update their voter registration with us before, and it has to go through that whole process before we can even, even entertain canceling their record.
Okay. And I, I actually have a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman, but I'll, I'll yield the time and, because one of the other commissioners may ask the same question.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner John, do you have any questions?
A question, maybe at the state level, in terms of concerns about deceased people and other people getting hold of their ballot and voting for them, ballot harvesting, basically. I asked this, I don't know, a year ago, do we have a seamless interface with the database that the moment the medical examiner lists a death certificate, which everybody needs to do anything after somebody has passed from this plane, that that is automatically reported to at least the Nevada Secretary of State? I mean, the other states are kind of on their own, right? But I just feel like that should be so seamless and, and that, that's easy, that's a logarithm that you, that you put into the, the actual rules of that database and they're kicked out immediately. And that's a factual piece of paper that's so legally bounding, obituary, I mean, how binding is that really? I could write one today for me, as long as I'll pay, right? The paper makes you pay for those too, so there's not, they're not even a public service anymore. They will put at the top the deaths in the RGJ, but not the actual obit, because you didn't pay enough money, because you obviously didn't love that person, and I'm just kidding. But it's very expensive now to put in the obituaries, so that's not even a public service anymore. Is there a possibility for that, do you know, or is that a Secretary of State question?
I can answer part of that, and then I will ask Deputy Secretary Vlaschen to answer the, the second part of it. And you are right, some of the information that we get even from an obituary, even, we have to make sure that we're absolutely certain that the date of birth matches, the name matches, and if it's not an exact match, we cannot remove somebody. We can't assume just because, you know, this person's name is Mark Smith and he's about the same age as the person we have on, you know, on, on, on our rolls, we can't just assume and remove them. Obituaries that have more information, that we can have at least two or three points of, of confirmation, then we can remove them. But we, you know, again, have to be very careful when we're using obituaries, and you're right, somebody can just write an obituary and have it in the paper and it could not really be, you know, a factual thing. And so Deputy Secretary Vlaschen, can you answer the, the second part of that question?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Mark Vlaschen, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections for the Record. To answer directly, there is not a seamless mechanism by which a death certificate is populated and then forwarded into our system. Part of the reason for that is that, again, in my discussions with the Office of Vital Statistics, routinely, individuals who pass away, even if they are surrounded by family members who care about them, who may be even living with them, that social security number, for example, may not be readily available, and in some cases, it may take, take weeks or months for the required information to be able to work its way back to the coroner or, you know, funeral director to get back to the Office of Vital Statistics so they can finish populating that record, certify it by the registrar of the Office of Vital Statistics, and then provide that information to us. And so because of that, there's a series of delays. I will tell you also that in part because of our concerns, you know, we did hear a number of folks saying, you know, a loved one passed away in the last few years or last few months, I still received the ballot. One of the things that we did, starting in November, we reached out to the Office of Vital Statistics, and we said, you know what, it seems like there may be concerns with the system, how about we do this? Every single digital record that you have at the Office of Vital Statistics going back 13 years, which is as far back as they have with digital records, send us everything, and we're going to reconfirm to make sure that any individual whose information that you did have at any time that has passed away in the last 13 years, that we're able to make sure that they are not an active or inactive registered voter, period. So for example, that, that's one step that we've taken. We've also looked at a number of other processes to make sure that we are trying to, as quickly as possible, get that information from the Office of Vital Statistics so that we can process it, get it to the clerks and registrars, so they can act on it as quickly as possible, recognizing the timeliness of that requirement. Does that answer your question?
That does, and it, it actually makes me think that, yeah, that also wasn't a great solution, because it takes a long time sometimes to get a death certificate. So there, there is a natural time lag in that too, so I, I understand what you're saying, and that actually is not a one-shot solution, finally, just dawned on me, which I'm a little slow in that way, no original thought here. So I rely on you, Mr. Deputy Secretary of State, and our Registrar of Voters, and I think ultimately, what I'd like to piggyback on, which I think a couple commissioners tried to say, and that is, you know, we elect a Secretary of State statewide to basically enforce what the Nevada Revised Statutes, state law, which we can't break just because we don't like it. And so therefore, the Registrar of Voters and the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, again, in another situation, we say, mother or father, may I? And then they say, yes, we may. It's not a demand, it doesn't go one way. And so again, this comes back to what Nevada Revised Statutes say, if you don't like the law, change the law, and the way you change that law, run for office, file a court injunction, vote against people that have ran for office, but you can't, we cannot live in a country that is, every day, if somebody doesn't like the law, they don't abide by it, because this would be absolute chaos here. And thank goodness we don't have every day a president being impeached and kicked out of office. This would be a disaster. Nobody would know what was going on here. We would be, like I've said before, a third world country, which I refuse to let my country go to that. I refuse, as a patriot, as somebody very proud to be American. And so I want to say to you, Mr. Deputy Secretary of State and Madam Spicula, as well as your deputy, and Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Vice Chairman, and the manager, and our legal team who advised us, thank you for bringing this information here. I know you already have given this information to every single person who has asked, but I think it is good for us to all have a stable starting- I think it is good for us to all have a stable starting place to discuss this. And if there are changes that you would like to be changed, I encourage you to talk to your legislators, who are the ones that change NRS, and your governor actually then evidently has to sign it for that. So I, I think you did a great job. I think the Deputy Secretary of State is a rock star and way into his data and his information, which is, that's all that I really want to listen to. People's feelings and emotions are important too, but sometimes we get so sidetracked by the intensity of people's objections that it's hard to find the actual answers. So I appreciate you both so much and your deputy and Mr. Manager and the Chair and the Vice Chair, who I know fielded thousands of phone calls about this, as did I. And I just, I have so much respect for all of you that carry out democracy and that's really what you're doing here. And I, I'm just lucky that you are part of the county and you are part of the Secretary of State staff, sir, but it sure makes me feel very American and very patriot to know that you all are looking out for this and implementing this. And of course, there will always be cheaters on all sides. What we have to do is make sure that we keep that playing field fair and square and that's all I care about in life, is it fair and square? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, and what a great presentation. Thank you so much for coming to this board to really clearly show how you're, you're just trying to keep things well managed and ensure that we're also not throwing people off of our voter rolls unnecessarily. So I think that there's a balance and I think that you're doing a great job in your, your office. I think this goes to Mr. Brown, our manager, looking at how can we best inform our citizenry? How can we ensure that our citizens know what our different departments are doing? And I know we talked about this in our retreat, but to further discuss how we can have the citizen classes about all these incredible departments that the county oversees and, and what they do and so that people are better informed and also understanding the incredible volunteer opportunities that we have at the county that people can get involved in. So really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. The Vice Chairman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of questions, maybe a 30,000-foot view of, of this. I'm, I'm going to be very honest, I do not like same-day voter registration. Don't like it. I think it's fraught with potential problems. But what happens on a same day? If I come in on election day and register to vote, how do, how do you, how do you deal with that? How do you ensure that, one, I am who I say I am? Two, I'm not registered in another state? And three, that I'm actually, you know, eligible to vote in Washoe County just in general?
So I can speak to how current law reads. At this point in time, when you go to, to vote and you are doing same-day registration, you're required to have a Nevada driver's license or Nevada ID card. That must be presented and it must have your current residential address on it. If it doesn't have your current residential address on that, that driver's license or ID card, you need that secondary proof of residence, residency to provide to the poll worker. So our system, we, we use electronic poll books in, in Washoe County and with that we have access to, the poll workers have access to our current database, but they are also able to input, and it's not a direct, they don't have direct access into our database. There's a bridge there where basically if somebody is, if we're looking up a voter, we put in their information, it sends a query out, the query sends back, this is an active voter, this is where they live, they do the confirmation, they activate the voter, then they go vote, everything's, you know, a normal processing of a voter. For same-day registration or somebody who's doing an update in person, again, they are required to provide that Nevada driver's license or Nevada ID card. And at that point, the poll worker enters that information in, there is a verification process that it hits, that that information does ping out to our voter registration database to make sure that the address is a valid address and it's not just a made-up address and it has to be an address that's in our voter registration street index. And at that point, the voter is then given some opportunity to, to sign their affirmation and make sure that we have all, we collect all the voter registration information that we need in order to fully register them in our system. And then once that is complete, they are activated, they of course have to sign our, the rosters, and we do use paper rosters now instead of electronic roster. Again, that's for image quality and it's, it's also for a better paper trail as far as being able to prove that somebody did come and appear to vote. We need to make sure that we maintain that. And so at that point, that person is a registered voter, deemed a registered voter, and they're eligible to vote at that point in time. Does that answer that question?
More or less. So, so there was an accusation by a public commenter earlier that, that one could get a driver's license but yet not be a citizen of the United States and be eligible to vote. How do you respond to that?
And people are, you know, there are driver's authorization cards, so somebody is able to get a driver's license and not, so there are people who are legally here and they're able to work here and they're able to live and never have to become a citizen. It's not, you know, they, they can live here forever indefinitely and not be a citizen and they can still get a driver's license. That can't happen. It is, of course, is on the voter to ensure that if they're not eligible, they're not a citizen, that they do not sign that affirmation and they did not.
But what if they do? What if they do sign that, that, how do you, how do we, how do we ensure that they're actually a legal citizen and are able to vote? That's my question.
So I don't have, you know, we don't have, there's no centralized database that we can access with our voter, you know, our voter information saying, okay, we're going to send all this information now to XYZ agency and they're going to turn around and tell us that these people aren't citizens. We don't have access to a centralized database that has that information. There are, you know, of course, we're relying on the voter to make sure that they're not committing a felony or committing any crimes. So it is, of course, on the voter as well to make sure that they're not breaking the laws and that is a crime. So of course, you know, verifying that you are a citizen and falsifying a voter registration application is considered a crime and it could potentially be, if brought to light, could be prosecuted depending on what the, you know, send it to the district attorney's office or the attorney general's office for, for review. It could affect if they are applying to become a citizen. It could, it could impact their ability to actually get that citizenship because they do take that very seriously as well, that you falsified a registration application. And that's definitely not something that somebody who's, you know, wanting to become a citizen, citizen wants to do. As far as, like I said, there's no centralized database that we have access to, to be able to, to double check that somebody is or is not a citizen. And again, you know, when you go to the DMV, they can't get a driver's license at that point in time. They should not, that information should not be getting to us through automatic voter registration, however, sometimes it does. If it does come to us and the voter contacts us and says, no, I'm not a citizen, I did not want to be registered to vote, of course, we, we act accordingly. We make sure that that voter information is taken off. We don't want people on their voting rolls, we don't want that to affect their citizenship opportunities or for them to be prosecuted. And of course, I, you know, again, if Deputy LaShin, do you have?
Yeah, I was going to ask him to chime in on this also. This is, this is rather disconcerting for me.
Yes, ma'am. Mark LaShin, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections for the Record. And thank you, Ms. Specula, for tossing that my way. Truth is, you did an excellent job of summarizing it. There is unfortunately no statute currently in place that authorized the Office of the Secretary of State to request or pursue any sort of citizenship test or information. So what we've done is exactly like she said, and set up the automatic voter registration system, for example, so that individuals are screened out so they do not get automatically entered into the system. You know, I guess the one other thing that may be worth adding is that if somebody does have information that abuse of the elections process and registration has occurred, again, I encourage them to report that to the Office of the Secretary of State using the Election Integrity Violation Report, the EIVR format. We have received a number of those and even when we looked into some of them, you know, it was a, I had a neighbor, there's a guy down the street who I know is, he's, maybe he isn't a citizen, but when we looked into it, it appears as though, from what we could tell, that either he didn't vote at all or in some cases maybe has been naturalized. So I, I think there's, the ability to prove that somebody either is not a citizen or is now a citizen, again, is certainly a challenge that we continue to face. But when in doubt, again, report it, please, and we'll investigate it using, you know, our resources, which include a number of state and federal law enforcement agencies.
So, and I thank you for that, for that answer, but I, I see this as a chink in the armor and potentially what we need to do is, is deal with the DMV when they issue a driver's license, that there is a citizenship status on that driver's license perhaps, that, that if you, if you aren't a citizen, it's not that we're not going to issue a driver's license, it's just it shows a citizenship status. So I, I mean, maybe that's a, that's a potential solution, but I see this as a statewide issue also. So it's, that's, again, a little disconcerting. One last question. Is there, for, for people who are still uncomfortable, is there, is there a, a test? I mean, I was able to look up my own loved one to see if he was still on the voter rolls and found out that indeed according to this, he's, he's not any longer. And it advises me to contact, if I think that the information is incorrect, it tells me, you know, contact the voter registrar's office and, and, you know, present the, the proper documentation that, that is necessary. But for, for people, and I know that this can take a great deal of time and I'm not, I'm not trying to bury the registrar's office or the, or the state registrar, but is there, is there a test if people think that there's some issue in the system? Is there a way that, that we can have them, you know, again, I happen to use an online portal, which was very easy, but they may have other questions that, that could help allay some of the concerns that they have. And I guess that's more of a rhetorical statement at this point, to find out if there's something that we need to do, that we need to be acting on so that, so that citizens can feel a great deal of confidence in our voting system.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and I agree, there is, there are challenges and not only with same-day registration, but a, a number of new types of abilities to, to vote, mail-in ballots, which is not new in the sense that you've always been able to get an absentee ballot if you request one and, and provide that. Mail-in ballots, however, can't, explain to me, because I didn't participate in the mail-in ballot this year, I haven't voted in person, but mail-in ballots, can you do same, you can't do same-day registration and get a mail-in ballot, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so same-day registration is only for in-person, in-person voting and they have to validate their address via a state ID to prove that, correct?
Yes. If somebody's going to do same-day registration, if they're going to appear in person, they do have to do the registration and vote at the same time. They can't say, I'm going to go in and do registration and then, oh, I'm going to go and go somewhere else for a while and then come back and, and vote. They have to vote at that time. And they also are not eligible to receive an absentee ballot.
Okay. So, and I, I know through last cycle, it was very challenging for us because we had a very short time period in regards to register in which before, we had to close off registration, make sure to, we could get the ballots to individuals at their home residence so they could participate in the mail-in ballot. Now, the assurance that you, the only assurance I, I believe now is that you're, you're basing off, since they are registered with you, is their signature, correct? At the bottom of their mail-in ballot, is that the only?
For verifying eligibility when somebody appears to vote, yes. Signature verification is done at the polling location or for absentee and mail-in ballots as well, for the eligibility for that ballot to be cast, we do use signature verification as a standard for, yeah, for checking.
All right. You know, those are my questions. I do appreciate you coming and participating. Commissioner Herman, I see you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Heather, Ms. Carmen.
I just wanted to add something about the same-day registration.
Ms. Carmen.
Sorry.
Can you stick your mic?
About the same-day registration, because we are a bottom-up state and not a top-down state like most are, when we do issue a same-day registration or someone does appear to same-day register, they were issued a provisional ballot. So it wasn't cast immediately until we were able to vet it. One, to kind of, you know, cross-check to make sure that they are eligible, also to make sure that they didn't already vote somewhere else in the state. We had to share that information with the Secretary of State and then it came back down to us. And then after that, we cast the, those ballots. Hopefully soon though, we will have a top-down system so then that way we won't have to issue provisional ballots to people that same-day register. And that's all I wanted to add, is the extra security that we had for same-day registration.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Carmen, I do appreciate it. Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both. I, I've talked to quite a few people that were, you know, that worked on the polls. And one of the things that they, they say, a lot of them, is that the early voting is so long and so many hours that by the time it gets time for the election, they're just, I mean, wiped out. They just felt so tired. And so I'm, I'm wondering, is there some way to shorten those days or make shifts or some, some other way to do that? Is that within your power?
Deanna Specula, just for the record, yes, it is. We have been offering expanded opportunities more recently because early voting hours, it has become so popular because our population has grown so much, we have expanded, we have 14 days that is required by law. That we do have some discretion on setting certain hours. There are minimum standards in most areas, of course, Clark and Washoe County, we have more, we have, I guess, longer hours and, and times that we must be open for certain things. Early voting is no different. We can, we can change some of the hours, however, we want to offer as many opportunities to our voters and expanding early voting hours is a great way for us to be able to expand voting for those who want to appear in person and not have to stand in a really long line. We did, and we are looking at expanding this because it's definitely a concern, not just, I mean, we've heard it from a lot of people, but we are also internally concerned about how much time and how hard that is for our workers to be out there for 10, 12 hours for 14 days straight and then come back and work, you know, 14, 16 hours on election day. Most of our poll workers are, you know, over the age of 60 and even I, I mean, a 12-hour day for me, I mean, I'm beat, I can barely do that anymore myself. So we get, I mean, we totally understand that that is such an ask. We are asking so much of our poll workers. What we were doing is, is offering shifts, that they could split a shift during the day or even having people work one week and then having them switch off with another, a counterpart who would work the second week. Of course, there's, you know, having to manage that many, because we have to hire almost twice as many, if we were to do that for every person, twice as many poll workers that requires training and, and there's a lot of resources that go into it. But as we are expanding other programs, this is one that we're looking at because we need poll workers and we need them also to want to, you know, want to volunteer and providing opportunities where they feel like they can do it and not, you know, you know, we don't, we, we don't want them to also, you know, be exhausted and we don't want them to be working in horrible working conditions. That's not what our goal is. So we are expanding those programs, we're looking at what we can do. We're, we're, we're working with, like I said, any ideas that people have, split shifts, you know, even three days, four days on rotations, something, anything that we can do. Again, because I know especially a lot of our volunteers, they are very, very dedicated to what they do. But I know that as years go on, it gets harder and harder to commit to that, not much time for that long. So I very much appreciate that. And again, we're willing to take suggestions if anybody has a great idea on how to, so we can still make sure that we have enough poll workers and we, we make sure that we can man of all our polling stations, but also provide a, a better working environment and it's not quite as exhaustive as what it's been. We're, that is on our radar for, for 2022.
Second question, and thank you for that. What, and this is coming from the public, what, what computer programs or systems are you present, what did we use in this last election?
For, so we have two different, two of our big election, what we, our critical election infrastructure, we have our voter registration database and it's called DIMS, it's D-I-M-S, it's Data Information Management Systems, and that is provided by ESNS, which is Electronic Software, ESNS, Electronic Systems and Software. And that's the vendor for that product, that voter registration database. We've had, ours is the oldest in the state, we've had it since, I believe it's a 1991 product. So it's very old, it's been updated, of course, several times in, in the last, the most recent one, I believe, was, that was a major overhaul, was in 2012 when online voter registration came into, into place. That was the biggest overhaul that we've had in updating in our voter registration database. We've, of course, had a small upgrade since, but that's, that's pretty much our, what we call our backbone of everything we do is that voter registration database. And like I said, it's a vendor we've had for a very long time. We work well with them and they, of course, are very supportive of our office. Our, our election equipment is provided Our our election equipment is provided by Dominion Voting Systems, we have been using them, so back in 2004, with the Help America Vote Act, all the new election equipment was bought throughout the state, and that was bought through Sequoia, that was the name of the vendor at the time, Dominion bought Sequoia out, and basically, we've had their product, so, well, I guess, since 2004, which was the Edge Voting Equipment, we upgraded to in 2017, to what we use now, the ICX Voting Tablet, it's a voting prime that we use, that's also through Dominion Systems, and so that's what we currently are using, but again, it's a vendor we've had for a very long time, and it's just the actual equipment is their their, you know, their newer voting equipment that we purchased in 2017. And our poll books are something that we have an internal build for our poll books, our electronic poll books.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, well, I think we've spent quite a bit of time with you today, Ms. Specula, Ms. Carmen, Mr. Lynch, Lynch, I'm, I'm sorry, lashing, I mispronounced her name, but thank you very much, all three of you, for participating today and bringing that information, I think you've provided quite a bit of transparency, and I think I think the requests that we've seen from the public and from this this board is continue to try to provide that that transparency, so that everybody, you know, a very safe and public election is really what everybody aims for, so.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very quickly.
Quickly, yeah, it's, I promise, it'll be fast. Ladies, were were any of our machines hooked up to the internet to, so that they could could send information into the system?
No, none of them are, even our tele system is isolated, and it's not, it's not on any internet connection, it's not available, and cannot be accessed from any outside source. Also, our voting tablets out, the ones that are used, that people see when they go to vote, those also are not connected to any internet source, and they're also not connected to each other, they are standalone units.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, all right. This is just a presentation for discussion only, and seeing no public comment, where you will close this and move on, thank you, ladies, we do appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, and it is late in the afternoon, we are, we are still have quite a bit to get through, being that we are not even out to our consent agenda yet, so let's just try to get through this as as expeditiously as possible. Mr. Manager, we are going to move on to now item seven, our consent agenda, is a consent agenda, it would be items 7A1 through 7F2, are all the items ready for consent?
Yes, sir.
All right, commissioners, anything in items in the consent agenda that anybody would like a further discussion or or presentation on? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
So moved, Hartong.
A motion, a motion from the Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Herman, all those in favor, I'll call for the vote, after after public comment, seeing there is no public comment, I don't have any on my tablet, sorry, I'm trying to be expeditious, but I don't want to be too fast, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously on all items in item seven. Mr. Chairman, and Vice Chairman, do you have a block vote for us this afternoon?
Mr. Chairman, I do, for your consideration, for the board's consideration, I would recommend, I would move that we put items eight, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 into block status.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second to put items eight, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 into a block? I have a second from Commissioner Herman. Mr. Manager, will you read those items into the record, please?
Yes, item eight is a recommendation to approve a cash dispersment from the Washoe County Sanitary Sewer Utility Fund 566 to the Truckee Meadows Water Authority in the amount of $150,000 to reimburse Toma for the utilities' proportionate share of the Bedell First Artificial Groundwater Recharge and Recovery Investigation Study and Engineering Assessment. Item 12, excuse me, is a recommendation to approve interstate and a local contract between the state of Nevada, acting by and through the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services in Washoe County, through the District Attorney, Child Support Division, for the period of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2025, in the amount of up to $12,672,336, for FY '22, $3,136,202, for FY '2023, $3,198,728, for FY '2024, and $3,262,504 for FY '2025, for the purpose of providing child support establishment and enforcement services in Washoe County, on cases that do not involve state-administered public assistance, to one of the parents furthermore, request that the chair, clerk, and and district attorney sign on behalf of the county. Item number 13 is a recommendation to retroactively approve temporary staffing from the talent framework in the, excuse me, approximate amount of $400,000 to support the COVID-19 response efforts and the COVID-19 vaccination events. Item number 14 is a recommendation to accept a temporary assistance to needy families or TANF Emergency Assistance Program subaward from the state of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, in the amount of $1,587,817. No county match for Washoe County Child Welfare Services retroactive for the period of April 1st, 2021, through March 31st, 2022, and authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute retroactively the sub-grant award documents, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item number 15 is a recommendation to retroactively accept and grant the Truckee Meadows Water Authority in the amount of $200,000, with no county match, for a period of retroactive from March 10th, 2021, and fully expended, approve the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $200,000, $250,000, I'm sorry, in unbudgeted expenditures for fiscal year 2021, and if approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget appropriation transfers and budget amendments, and authorize human resources to create one FTE, Homeless Services Program Specialist Position, as elevated, as evaluated by the approved Washoe County Job Evaluation Process to oversee the Safe Camp Program, Program, I'm sorry, items, support the development of a Safe Camp location to approve, to improve water quality along the Truckee River, and expand capacity for those experiencing homelessness. Item number 16 is a recommendation to accept the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Public and and Visiting Remodel Award from the United States Department of Justice through the state of Nevada Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Administration, amount not to exceed $1,568,266, with no match required, to be used to pay for a remodel of public access area and inmate visiting at the sheriff's office, expenses for the retroactive grant, period of March 1st, 2021, through January 19, January 19, 2022, and if approved, authorize sheriff Balem to execute grant award documents, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments and appropriate and appropriation transfers. Item number 17 is a recommendation to approve FY '2021 sole-source purchases of core and edge routers from Converge One, and approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed to exceed $100,000, but not exceed $366,532.20. Item number, well, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I do appreciate you for taking, reading those all in, I do have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, are there any public comment on any items listed in the motion?
There is nobody signed in on any of these items.
All right, seeing no public comment, any motions, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go back to items, item nine, Mr. Manager.
Item nine is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number One to Golf Management License and Services Wild Creek Golf Course between Washoe County and Maz Golf Management, to amend the term and license fee effective June 23rd, 2020, through December 31st, 2021, retroactive to November 15th, 2020, and to amend the payment terms for Maz Golf Management to Washoe County from 50% of gross profits earned to 50% of net profits earned, and amend the services and facilities to be provided by by the county, by ending the provision of one part-time temporary irrigation specialist to assist with irrigation and ground maintenance effective November 15th, 2020.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any any discussion or presentation needed on this item? I see, I see none, Maz Golf has done a phenomenal job for us, it's here at Sage, and managing a number of our golf courses, and did step in at a time when needed for Wild Creek, so seeing none, is there any public comment?
No, sir, there is not.
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board, looking for a motion to approve the item as posted. I have a motion from Commissioner Jackman, a second from Vice Chair Hartong, I said we've called for public comment, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously, please affirm your votes on the screen. All right, Mr. Manager, item 10.
Item 10 is a recommendation to direct staff with assistance from the District Attorney's Office to begin Stage Two of the unsolicited proposal policy by completing all necessary documents, including leases and a term sheet for the proposal of Maz Golf Management for the continuation of golf operations at Wild Creek Golf Course, and if approved, return to a future meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for consideration and possible approval of any resulting agreements.
All right, this is, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, looking for, I have a motion from Commissioner John, second from Vice Chair Hartong, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Seeing no public comment, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting, please affirm your votes on the screen. All right, Mr. Manager, item 11, sir.
Item 11 is a recommendation to approve the Golf Management License and Services of Washo Golf Course, contract between Washoe County and Bellman Golf, Inc., for initial, an initial term ending in December 31st, 2025, and two five-year extensions for operation and maintenance of the Washoe Golf Course. The contract makes changes to the current agreement, and in sum, requires Bellman to operate and manage the course, including food and beverage concessions, to make semi-annual lump-sum payments to the county of $25,000, totaling $50,000 per year, requires Bellman to collect certain capital improvement project fees on behalf of the county, changes the funding for the capital fund from $2 per round of golf to four lump-sum payments in the amount of $25,000 each, to be deposited, made quarterly by Bellman, which payments will be used to make, to make, to use for major capital improvements, equipment refurbishments, and enhancements for the golf course, to prepare a five-year capital improvement program and budget to be reviewed and approved by the county annually, increases Bellman's maintenance and repair responsibilities, allows the parties to negotiate changes to the agreement at the beginning of the fourth year of the initial term, and the fourth year of any expanded terms to address significant changes to the economy, water supply, contractor performance, or other related circumstances, and other terms as described therein.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager, Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in, and this is within your district, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to say, thank you so much to the Bellman Group for working with the county to find some mutually agreed-upon contract changes, and I'm really looking forward to working with you on enhancing the Washoe Golf Course, and I also just want to do a shout-out of thanks to Vice Chair Hartong for also assisting with the contract negotiations, so I'm very pleased, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hill, second from Commissioner John, is there any public comment signed in on this?
There is nobody signed in.
Seeing no public comments signed in, I will bring it back to the board, call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Managers, thank you, Bellman, for your your continued assistance, and we look forward to your continued operation of Washoe Golf. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item 18, this is our legislative update, sir.
Yes, item 18 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County.
All right, so, Mr. Manager, well, if you want to kick this off, or we can do this tag team, I'll let you start.
Yes, so for the commissioners, there's an update to your report this week, and you will notice that the cover page, we've added a summary of the recent activity in terms of number of bills, bills tracked by the county, et cetera, and key dates that have occurred, or that are ahead of us in the legislative session, if you then move to page two, these are bills of interest for the county that, and this list is new versus what you've seen before, starts with AB 90, which is a bill that originally required local governments to pay for projects or local of local significance, or it's been amended to do an interim study to look at large projects that received abatements, and that may have an impact on neighboring counties, and this kind of came out of the blockchain, legis bill that was proposed, which might have activity going on in one county that would affect surrounding counties, so it's being worked on as a potential solution to that issue. AB 397 is the clerk's bill that repeals the portion that requires that they be open till midnight, that passed out of committee last week, last Friday. AB 422 creates a state centralized state voter registration platform, amend, and it did pass out of committee Thursday night, this would help us with the same-day voter registration and other election bills that passed last session, per the discussion we just had, in terms of everybody in the state doing it the same way, same process. AB 263 is a voter registration issue, currently, your old registration has to be canceled before you can go in and and sign a new one to be created, this removes the requirement to cancel the old registration, and allows for minor changes to avoid multiple mail ballot mail ballot issues. AB 346 is a digital goods bill, we recommend supporting this bill as it creates parity in the provision of multi-channel video services, AKA cable services, we used to call them, Commissioner, so it basically puts the tax on direct broadcast satellite providers to equalize the burden that they would have to share. to equalize the burden that they would have to share approximating franchise fees that are charged to cable companies. Those revenues would go to the state, but it creates parity in terms of the delivery system. So, so those are the new items that are on page two. If you, page three and beyond are generally the same as what you were seeing before, although there may be more bills that have been added that we're continuing to watch. And my understanding is that the deadline, we've reached the deadline at least for bills to be approved and passed out of committee, so we should see some firming up, I guess is a way to describe it in terms of what we really need to dig in on going forward. Mr. Chair, those would be my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do appreciate it. And I want to thank the whole legislative team, which comprised of the manager, Assistant County Manager, Thomas Solero and Valetich, Ms. Lori Cook, and Jamie Rodriguez, who's truly been testifying through this entire session. But I also want to point out Commissioner Hill has been very active, even as a brand-new commissioner, involved in adding a ton of information and really a strong participation from her on behalf of the board. So it was fantastic to see that, and I really have enjoyed working with her. Couple points of interest I want to do bring out. As you can see on the bills that we are supporting, some of the big challenges that we are seeing, that you see these bills being due pass out of their committees, the challenges are that some of the amendments that have been drafted are still waiting on for LCB. LCB has a number of bills and amendments that are still drafting, and so that is causing kind of a waiting period or a holding period before they can go to the floor or to another second committee. So until we get to, until LCB gets those moving, we will still continue to see some of these hang-ups and potentially some waivers of these dates. However, we still are shooting for that first House passage for April 9th, where we're shooting for that, and that 20th of next week, but I do believe that those will be waived as well, looking at some of these bills. Couple other things, as the manager pointed out, AB 90, that is the Assembly Majority Leader, Teresa Britidas Thompson, that is her bill, and it does, has worked with us, and I want to thank the Majority Leader for her willingness to work with us on that bill. Another one I want to bring to the attention is the SB 10, which is a revision to taxation for governments that would create a 3% floor. Those bills have all, to my understanding, will not get hearings and are truly, probably at this point officially dead. We probably will not see any tax bills through this session. There are a number of still BDRs waiting to be introduced, and so we will see potentially some more bills that will be added in the next couple of weeks. So, and things are starting to heat up in Carson. We have lots of people down there working on it, and we do appreciate it. Any questions or discussions on this? Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a brief comment on AB 90. This goes back to when I was first elected. Prior to being elected, I served on the Regional Planning Commission. And one of my biggest complaints was that we're not truly regional. Regional doesn't really look regionally. When you talk about an issue that's regionally, you talk about inter-county issues. And a PRS or a project of regional significance many times occurs outside of Washoe County, but there's no way for conformance review. And so I look forward to what comes out of this because very large projects in neighboring counties do affect us. And large projects in our own county can affect neighboring counties. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to start looking at some of these things regionally. And I'm supportive of what might come out of this. I don't know what exactly it's going to look like. As we all know, the devil is in the detail. So we'll see what the final language looks like, but I am supportive of this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is for possible action. Is there any public comments signed in on this?
There is no public comment, but if I may clarify a point on AB 397. It does not reduce the clerk's hours. It takes away the section of the law that requires the county to allow the chapels to issue marriage licenses should we not be open.
Great, correct. Thank you for that clarification. All right, seeing nothing further, Mr. Manager, there's really no reason for a motion to take action on this. I think it's kind of, we're kind of steadfast at this based upon our current direction we've had in previous meetings. So if anything changes, we will bring it back to you for substantive change. All right, let's open the public hearing. We do have two public hearings this afternoon. We will move to item 19. Mr. Manager, or actually, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, will you provide us? This is a first reading. Will you provide us a bill number?
I certainly will. This will be bill number 1856, an ordinance pursuant to Nevada Revise Statute 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and Moonlight Hills Estates LLC regarding tentative subdivision map case number WTM 16-002 Golden Mason North, a subdivision of two parcels totaling 119.76 acres into a 15-lot subdivision which was approved on March 7th, 2017. This agreement extends the deadline for filing the first in a series of final subdivision maps from March 7th, 2021 to March 7th, 2023. The subject site is located north of Golden Valley Road and east of Estates Drive. The parcels are located within the North Valleys Area Plan, the North Valleys Citizen Advisory Board, and Washoe County Commission District Number 5.
Okay, as this is a public hearing, Madam Clerk, is there any public comments signed in to speak on behalf of this?
There is nobody signed in on this item.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board. This is, Commissioner Herman, this is in your district. Would you like to introduce this bill? Okay, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll do it. So this is just nothing more than a map extension. These are about one dwelling unit per acre requests. It's been there for a while. I can only imagine that they've had issue with getting construction workers. I mean, it's just crazy right now, as is the cost of construction materials. But I don't see that this is an issue. So I would move that we introduce bill number 1856 with the second reading, and I'm sorry, I don't have it open.
Second reading, May 11th.
May 11th? Oh, my bad. Correct, with the second reading of May 11th, 2021. Thank you.
All right, we have a bill that's been introduced. Thank you very much, Commissioner Herman and Vice Chair Hartung. All right, we are on to item 20. Mr. Manager.
Yeah. Item 20, public hearing master plan amendment case number WMPA 21-0001 for Woodland Village to adopt an amendment to the Cold Springs Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan to approve the master plan designation from rural to suburban residential on plus or minus six acres of an 18.5-acre parcel, which is APN 556-290-30, and suburban residential to rural residential on two parcels, APN 087-520-01 and 02, totaling 10.1, plus or minus 10.13 acres for owners Woodland Village North LLC. If adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect after a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. And regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 25-0001, Woodland Village to adopt, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a favorable conformance review by Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission, an amendment to the Cold Springs Regulatory Zone map, a component of the Cold Springs Area Plan, to approve a regulatory zone amendment from the general rural regulatory zone to the MDS regulatory zone for plus or minus six acres of an eight, plus or minus 18 and 1/2-acre parcel, APN 556-290-35, to approve a regulatory zone amendment from the medium-density suburban regulatory zone to high-density rural regulatory zone for two parcels, APN 087-520-01 and 02, totaling plus or minus 10.13 acres, and to reestablish MDS density, plus or minus three acres of plus or minus 171-acre parcel, APN 556-290-24, for owners Woodland Village LLC, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions to that effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. I, this is a, this is a public hearing, and so I do, we will open public comment first. Do we, oh, a presentation? Does anybody need a presentation on this? I'm not saying that I need a presentation. Do you, commissioners? All right, let's open this up for public comment. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
First up, we have Mr. Kenji Otto, followed by Mr. Frank Schenk.
As the largest parcel owner that butts up to APN 087-520-01 and 02, actually 01, I encourage you to pass this. And I think this is going to be, this is a good thing for the area. And I know it'll help my situation or improve my connection with that property. And so that's pretty much all I have for it.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
Yeah, Mr. Frank Schenk, and I, it's kind of hard to show this, but...
Can we have the overhead, please?
Anyway, I had a good talk, went very positive talk with Peter listener this morning. I was glad what he had to say. I live over in these parcels right here, and I was very impressed that he was, told me that he's going to relocate the 27 homes into a different area because it would really have an effect on the whole street where I live, on the people here. So I was really pleased with that news. I know that there's a possibility near, my other finger's out of building three homes, but it said it would be very hard still because it's on a slope. The only thing I asked is that it's possible easement somehow on those three homes, if they do be built? Because a lot of people have vehicles, you know, all-terrain vehicles and like to go on their vehicles for years, and I'd like to see something with, if they do approve those homes, that they're told that, you know, it's open to people because I worry that if somebody moves from the city and they complain about noise and people motorcycles, that they're going to threaten to sue lifestyle homes and say, hey, we're going to sue you because of the vehicles. I'd like to see something put in writing to those three homes that, you know, you're, you know, this is what you're learning. I mean, the people that are there for like, I've lived over 20 years on that street, and I just want to see, you know, some kind of easement to protect those people also, and easement for fire. If there's fire and stuff, they need to get up to these routes right away. That's a big effect. The other thing, I had a good conversation with Peter, as I said, is any chance, as he said, it's very rare that those land will be developed. I said, well, any chance of using the nature conservancy if they were to buy the land? He said, that could be on the table. So I was really impressed with that. That was a great conversation. I'm really concerned about the traffic is getting increased. Although I wouldn't mind seeing something on the end of Crystal Canyon and White Lake Parkway, such as a roundabout. It's, there's been some really horrific accidents there. At the end of my street, Garnet, is getting bad with traffic, Garnet and Crystal Canyon, and also on the exits along the freeway, White Lake and a freeway, I wouldn't mind seeing a roundabout there. Anyway, thank you for listening, and I think you guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schenk.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right, seeing nothing further. Just to make sure that our record is complete, and we want to, I would like to get, if we could, get a brief presentation, or if there are any comments from the applicant. Mr. Rayly, I know, was on Zoom with us, potentially for a conversation. Mr. Rayly, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Great. We concur with the staff report. I do have a brief presentation, if you'd like to see it, or if you just kind of run through quickly. It sounds like a complicated request, but it's really quite simple. It's simply shifting some zoning and density around, out of the existing established neighborhood in Cold Springs and up into the final phases of Woodland Village, which that area is essentially already graded and ready to go. There's no existing homeowners that are joined where the density is going. It's in the area plan for development already, and as Woodland Village has evolved over the last 20 years, it's really a cleanup, basically, is what's being requested here today. I do have a presentation, if you'd like to see it. Bob, Peter, and Dustin listener are also available if you have specific questions for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Rayly. We do appreciate it. I'm not seeing any requests from any of our commissioners for a presentation. I do appreciate you putting that on the record for us. And your comments, at this time, we have, we've taken public comment on this issue. I am now going to look for a motion. Commissioner, Commissioner, oh, okay.
Okay. Chairman, if you'd like me to.
Sir.
I'd move to adopt the master plan amendment case number WMPA 21-001 as listed in the staff report on page four through six, finding all of the consistencies with compatibility, response, availability, and desired pattern of growth.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung, second from Commissioner Jung. Seeing no further public comment on the item, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. All right, that concludes our public hearings. We'll close the public hearings. On to our final public comment of the day, Mr. Manager.
Excuse me, Commissioner Lucy, this is Julie Olander.
Yeah, Ms. Olander.
You have also a regulatory zoning amendment. So it's just not the master plan, but it's also the zoning amendment.
Oh, there is the RZA. Thank you, Ms. Olander. So we do have an RZA, RZA amendment case number WRZA 21-001 to amend the Cold Springs Regulatory Zone map and a component for the Cold Springs Area Plan. Motion to approve. I have a motion, a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Commissioner Jung. Call for the vote again, seeing there is no public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners. Thanks, Ms. Olander, for catching that for us. I appreciate it. All right, final public comment. Mr. Manager.
Public comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on, off, and on the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Great. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
We have Mr. Kenji Otto in chambers.
Long meeting. So a couple of the items is, one is, the sheriff just put up a notice that said that they're going to be... that said that they're going to be citing illegal shooters. I think the county needs to get out that word a little bit better than just that, if they would. I just, I've been trying to do my thing and spread the word to people, because I'm pretty sure that they're serious about it. And that would be a good community item. The roads on Crystal Canyon Boulevard are being studied at this time. They have the road things that track the speed and all that and count cars. And I'd like to thank all of you for helping out on that. And if we can get, if you could reconsider the metal detector, removing it and allowing people to go through freely. And then there was an issue with the temperatures. People are getting double temp. If, maybe a list or something that were, they can just, if they're willing to give their name, where they can only, you know, so they can get one temperature instead of multiple temperatures, it's kind of a hassle, and I'm sure it's a hassle for the workers out there to do that. And we've been having some issues with Commissioner Herman's email. I generally have to email her to her private email. It'd be nice if I could email, also make sure that her email is working and that she gets her emails through the county system. I also have been made aware that she was taken off of the Truckee Meadows Water Authority and Western Region Water Commission. If that could be, she's really needed on those, I believe, and I'd like to speak on that and just simply say that if she could be, it could be reconsidered and she'd be returned to those committees and the Water Authority, that'd be great. It'd be helpful for the, for her district. The, pretty much, that's all I have to say, and the presentation on the voting was great. I hope people were able to see that and hear all about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. We do appreciate it. All right.
I have nobody else has signed in.
Seeing no further public comment, in person or on Zoom, we'll close public comment. We are to our final 22, which is our Commissioners and County Managers announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything final today?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, did I see anything? Once, twice, sold. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.